Oh my God. All right, we're gonna call our meeting in order. Madam Clerk, if we can have a roll call?
Councilmember Brand, Councilmember Brandau, Councilmember Capriello, Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Quintero, Councilmember Soria, and Council President Baines.
Here. All right, we'll all stand, we'll have our invocation by Pastor Henry Aputa, and remain standing because immediately following, we'll salute the flag.
Thank you, Councilman Olivier, for another opportunity to pray for our city and the council members. May we bow our heads for prayer. Most holy and merciful God, hallowed be your name. I thank you for this day. I thank you for your abundant blessings upon our mayor, our council president, and members, our city and staff, our residents. I ask your blessings upon the leadership and the citizens of our diverse and resourceful city and nation. We thank you, Lord, for the start of another school year in Fresno and the surrounding communities. We thank you for the creative solutions for our water storage and distribution needs. We thank you for the citywide effort in providing training and new jobs for the unskilled and underskilled in Fresno. Nationwide, we are severely challenged with how to stop the police brutality, gang violence, and crime facing us today. Most holy and merciful God, enable us to pray and to continue using our God-given talents in finding practical solutions to these conflicting and challenging issues that stand in our way of real and measurable peace, unity, and progress in our nation. Enable us to not give up until we find the formula or incentives that motivate us to act in ways that help to reestablish trust between us as a people. Most holy and merciful God, continue to grant our city officials the wisdom to govern amid these conflicting and challenging issues. Let the show of trust and neighborly love between citizens start with them. Let this show of trust and neighborly love be embraced by law enforcement and by citizens all over our nation. Let the public and private sectors continue to collaborate in providing and allowing equal access to education, healthcare, transportation, housing, recreation, good wages, and vibrant shopping centers for every neighborhood in our I offer this prayer and embrace this hope for all U.S. residents and citizens in Fresno, in God's most holy and merciful name. Amen.
Please face the flag, ready, salute. All right, we have a couple of ceremonial presentations this afternoon. First up, we will have the presentation of the SPCA Pet of the Month by Vice President Capriello.
Thank you, Todd. First, I want to say it's great to be home here in Fresno, and I miss the City Hall family. I miss my stepbrothers and my stepsister, Esmeralda. Esmeralda, I missed you, my stepsister. So anyway, I just wanted to say that, I really mean it from the bottom of my heart. Now, this is a great part of the afternoon, and that is to introduce our Pet of the Month. And would you help us out with that?
Sure. This is Jordan Sparks. She is a three-to-four-month-old Sheltie Australian Shepherd mix that arrived to the shelter as a stray, and she's now available for adoption over at the CCSPCA as soon as we get back to the shelter today.
And how did she come up, become the basketball player that we know?
I really don't know, but I hear that she loves to dance and do her little singing over there at the shelter. So she's a very talented dog. She has some tricks already, but we're not gonna try to show them here. She'll probably piddle on the floor here.
That's been done before.
But yeah, she's absolutely adorable. She was on CBS 47 today, so hopefully today's the day that she finds her forever home. We do have well over 500 pets over at the CCSPCA currently, and about 200 available for adoption. So we recently had our Clear the Shelter event, too. It was a nationwide program that we were in, and 51 found a home in less than six hours.
Congratulations, that's fantastic. And who are your friends here?
We have Annette, she's a part of the adoptions team, and one of our volunteers who helps out tremendously over there at the CCSPCA, Alex.
Alex, thank you very much for all you do. So if I want, or someone wanted to adopt this puppy, what would they do?
Well, all you need is your ID and the adoption fee, which varies. It starts at $180 for a little puppy like this, and of course, it's an adoption package. You get the spay and neuter, the license if you're in the Fresno city jurisdiction, and vaccines, 30 days of wellness visits over there at the CCSPCA, which is a good $750 coverage over there if anything happens to Jordan or any other pet that you adopt at the shelter.
And that's all for that one low price?
Yes.
Perfect, perfect. So hopefully, before the meeting adjourns today, we'll find a home for this wonderful puppy. Very passive, very loving.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for being here.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Capriello. Next up, we will have the Idea Pay presentation by the City
Well, good afternoon. I think I am very fortunate to have this opportunity to recognize these two individuals who just exemplify the creativity and the innovation that I think is throughout all of our staff at City Hall, or are the biggest part of them. These two have been particularly creative, and we're acknowledging them for the ideas that they came up with that not only improve efficiencies in our processes, but also save the city money in the long run. And that's great for not only our organization, but the community as a whole. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to go ahead and read exactly what it is that they've provided for us.
I'll start with Michael Murphy. Michael Murphy is a water system operator, too, and he submitted an Idea Pay recommendation for an innovative solution to a problem in the Water Division. Michael provided his professional opinion on the Water Division's security gate installation and layout. There were nine water meters out of the approximately 60 meters that were too tall to open and read after the new gate was installed. The cost savings, excuse me, the options were to reorder new shorter meters or to have the meters cut and rewelded. Michael's recommendation was to take the hinge lid, which opens upward, and modify it to, so it swings out to the side, allowing the meter to be read. The cost savings, benefits, and effects from Michael's lid modification takes about 10 minutes to complete and only requires a 10-cent screw. After meeting with Mr. Murphy and confirming the one-time cost savings with the Water Division's accounting section, it was determined that an award in the amount of $100 was merited to Mr. Murphy. And next, we have Greg Gurr. Greg is a water system operator, too, and he submitted an Idea Pay recommendation for an innovative solution to a problem at the Water Division. A waste product comprised of concrete and asphalt from the water distribution jobs were piling up with no way to separate or salvage the field dirt or fine soils. The recommendation was to design and build a separative screen to be used in the material transfer station from used and new steel materials. The screen was a frame with bars and expanded metal screen mesh to allow the fine soil, such as spilled dirt, to pass through the screen for use, or for reuse, actually. The cost savings benefit and the effect that has been, that much less fuel has to be used to haul away the materials, less material has to be purchased for backfill, and less sorting has to be done on the job site, which helps speed up the work efficiency and completion times. So after meeting with Mr. Gurr and confirming the ongoing cost savings with the Water Division's operations section, it was determined that an award in the amount of $500 was merited for Gregory Gurr. Thank you.
Bud, would you like to say a few words?
Yes. I'd just like to say a couple things about these guys. They really, when it comes to working, their ethic is above and top-notch, but the things that they do and recognize in their daily mission in getting water to everybody in this town saves the city just by the simple things that they've done here. And they go above and beyond, and I'm glad to have it recognized, I'm glad to be part of their daily mission. So thank you, Greg, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg and Mike.
All right, moving right along, we'll now go to the approval of the minutes. We're going to approve the minutes from June 9th, June 10th, June 23rd, and July 30th. City Attorney, I can take that all in one motion, correct?
Yes, you may.
All right, I'll now seek a motion to approve those minutes.
For me?
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. Now, Councilmember reports and comments. Councilmember Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this morning, this afternoon, I'd like to ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Pete Defendis. And Pete was born and raised in Fresno in the old Fresno's Italian town over behind St. Ophansus Church, and his father passed when he was one-year-old and left, the mom never remarried, but the family made do with what they had, and all the children turned out to be really successful. Pete was just one of a kind and had the biggest heart for Fresno and its residents, and he and his brother, once they acquired a little bit of money, started bringing a little bit of money, opened up a liquor store in West Fresno, the infamous P&amp;R Liquor where Kearney Palms is now. And there was a good meeting place for a lot of guys that got together and enjoyed life, made a lot of good friends there. But Pete had the biggest heart for Fresno, lived over by St. Anthony of Padua Church, and was always what you could call an unofficial ambassador for Fresno and loved children. He worked since the 1980s at Bullard High School as a campus supervisor, and he loved kids, he loved Fresno, and just had the biggest heart for our community. And he's gonna be, he's gonna be really missed. He was a man's man, but always ready to give you the shirt off his back, so I wanted to do that in his memories, just to, we lost a treasure, we've lost a treasure. Also, I wanted to congratulate a company in southeast Fresno. It's called Sunnyside Bicycles, and it was recently selected one of the top 50 bicycle shops in the United States. And so it's a great honor for them. They recently opened up another shop in Reedley, and it's John and Vanessa McCracken, and they also do a lot with the Bicycle Coalition. Lastly, I wanted to thank our Parks and Recreation Department. And Manuel, I know I'd get your attention. We have a big community event at Mosqueta Center on September the 19th. It's our annual Carnival Family Day, and I wanted to invite the community out there with, it's a Children's Day event. Elementary school is the ones that we target. But we've worked closely with Parks and Rec over the years and really show a positive side to the kids in terms of what can be accomplished. Tony Hernandez, for example, brings out some of his friends, and they show off their Harley motorcycles and talk to the kids and show them, you know, you can get one of these if you wanna work for it. We've been fortunate to have the Fax Bus there as well, and we look forward to seeing it again. And so, wanted to invite everybody. The amount of families and individuals that show up is 3,000 to 5,000 people. So it's a great, great event, everything's free, except for the soda and hot dogs. So look forward to working with you, and thank you for really all the help and support you folks have given us in making it a successful event. Really appreciate it and look forward to working with you again. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Council President. I have a few just announcements. I do wanna also recognize the Parks Department for working with us. I know in our last council, I had announced that we had our second movie night at Lyons Park. Both events were successful. This was the first time that it was done outside of kind of the downtown area. I know in District 1, it was very well-received, so I look forward to working with you guys. I also want to thank the director for addressing an issue that we had brought to his attention. We had a broken, yeah, a broken gate at Quigley Park, and an ask from the community that we get an entrance on Dakota 'cause the entrance was on a side. So for some people, it wasn't as convenient to enter the park, so we want to thank you for taking care of that. We're very, very appreciative. Also, just want to recognize a couple other departments that helped us out to make National Night Out at Success at Quigley Park. We had about 500 residents, a lot of children that came out. So I want to thank the Fresno Police Department, the Fire, the Fire Foundation for donating helmets. The kids were so excited. We were able to give about 100 kids helmets, again, really promoting bike safety in our community. We also had volunteers that were fixing bikes, so we had over about 100 kids get their bikes fixed that evening. I want to thank also the Fresno Water Conservation Department. They were out there giving out information and also goodies to help residents conserve water, and just a number of other organizations like Tenants Together, Fresno Barrios Unidos, who were out there giving out resources and information to our constituency. And I do want to give a shout-out to Joe Martinez. He's very active in the community, works for Fresno EOC, the sanctuary. He was out there, he was instrumental in helping us secure these helmets for the kids, and also getting some of the sanctuary students and the Soul School students to go out and volunteer and help fix these bikes. So I'm very grateful for everyone's contribution. I also want to just give a shout-out to Dell Estabrook and Tommy Escada. In talking to my staff, I know that they've had some issues that have come, tough issues, that have come from our constituents, and they're very impressed by how quickly you guys have turned around and fixed them, so we're very grateful. Just so you guys know, your work doesn't go unnoticed, and so I want to thank you guys personally for everything that you guys do. Just one more thing that I want to recognize, I know that we worked with Public Works, we worked with the manager's office in submitting an application to first five here in Fresno County, and so we were awarded a $10,000 grant to create a family-friendly space and put baby changing tables on the first and second-floor restroom, so I'm very excited, both men and women, so equally, so that when families come in to not only our council meetings, but also there's other events, like the employee recognition events, or when our new officers or firefighters are getting sworn in. We have many families that come with little children, so we want to make sure that we provide a family-friendly space for the kids when they can't be in the room, but also a space for women who are breastfeeding that may be visiting our City Hall, so that they also have some privacy in, not too far from here from the chamber, so that they can also have a moment to breastfeed their kids. So I'm very grateful for the partnership with our manager's office, Public Works. Thank you, guys, and I look forward to having the facilities upgraded, hopefully by later this fall. So thank you again.
Councilmember Capriello.
Thank you. You know, the city of Fresno, we have some wonderful college teams, right? Fresno State Bulldogs, I know my colleague right here, Steve Brandau, is a huge fan, as we all are. Fresno City Rams, another great college program, but we in Fresno have the highest level of a professional sports program, a sports team right here in Fresno. That's the Fresno Grizzlies. And I wanted to promote that this afternoon and invite everyone to be sure and support the Grizzlies. This is a home stand for this week. I'm gonna be there Friday night. It's a water forum night as well, so of course, I'll be there in support of that. But at this point, I think they have the best record in the PCL, and they're gonna make the playoffs, and we need to support them the 7th and the 9th, first two playoff games of September. So mark those on your calendar. They're gonna have some special promotions. They've done the Taco Truck, and they've done Back to the Future and some events like that. But now it's time, now it's time for the citizens of Fresno to step up and support this team, especially this week, in getting them to the playoffs and make sure it's final and we're there. It'll be the first time ever at Chichanci Park that we've had a professional sports team make the playoffs. So we have to support them, we need to support them. They support us, they put our community on the map, so it's really, really important that we do the same, not only at the college level, but this is professional, folks, this is AAA. One little inch below the Major League Baseball, and these guys are fabulous players. We've got some All-Star players, third baseman Duffy, he's gonna be the All-Star program, as well as a couple of pitchers. So we really need to be out there, I'm gonna be out there. It's a great time, good fun, kids, adults, everyone enjoys it. So please come to Chichanci Park, please come and support the Fresno Grizzlies. Thank you.
Councilmember Brand.
Wanted to ask the city or Water Department, the state is now offering, I believe, $2,000 rebates on turf conversion. If we could link that to the city website, and I'm assuming that we have to, that's a separate application to the state of California, so if our citizens could have all the information on how to do it, and I think we have $250, right? $250? Okay. That's all, Council President. Thank you.
Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take this opportunity to say a few words about the problem of vagrancy in the 7th District and along the Blackstone Corridor. Within the past 72 hours, I've received a number of phone calls from business owners who are now desperate and at the end of their rope because of the problem of chronic vagrancy in front of their businesses. Everyone from a delicatessen to a tuxedo rental establishment to an undertaker has called me in the last 72 hours to tell me how the vagrants in front of their businesses are beginning to chase their customers away, and that this is a chronic problem that's been going on for months and months and even years. The business community in the 7th District does not believe that the problem of homelessness in the city of Fresno has been solved. And while they're very appreciative of the Fresno Police Department and this administration for their efforts as far as keeping the homeless, the task force going, and also the first steps home, and the compassionate ways in which vagrancy is being addressed in the city of Fresno, the fact that they are losing money because of this is starting to turn them from compassionate to annoyed and concerned for the future of their business because they see money going out the door. Just two days ago, the owner of one of the restaurants in the 7th District, when trying to get rid of vagrants from his parking lot, was chased by someone with a butterfly knife, and his life was threatened, and he had to flee from this person with the butterfly knife. Radio Park is a haven for vagrants abusing alcohol, abusing drugs. It's an ongoing problem that the people in that neighborhood have had it up to their eyeballs with. And so I'm bringing this up during council reports so that my colleagues can hear the frustration in my voice because I'm merely relaying something that my constituents are struggling with to the point of losing business. The AJ's Tuxedo on Blackstone across the street from where Casey Haggard was murdered, they have seen their business go down 30% because they rely on northern high schools as part of their business model to get the Clovis West and the Bullards, and obviously, they want to rent tuxedos to kids from everywhere. But the management of that establishment has determined that parents are just no longer coming down there because of the amount of homeless that are encamped in front of his place. I think that it's going to need a greater response from this body and from this administration going forward, and I'd be happy to be involved in some kind of task force where we can actually hear from business owners instead of from activists, and we can hear from these business owners of how they're struggling and how they're threatened by the problem of chronic vagrancy in the city of Fresno. So council, council, I'm very happy that you've been able to hear these remarks, and if you have any questions, I'll be available offline. But going forward, I think this is something that really, really needs to be addressed in our city before it's too late. Thank you.
Councilmember Soria.
I forgot to ask a question during my comment time, but just wanted to ask the City Manager's Office, I know Bruce just stepped out, but I want to get an update on the Parks Master Plan. I know that it's being prepared by DARM, and then also the RFP for our Public Safety Communications. Just want to get kind of an update, because I know that in regards to the Public Safety Communications, we had approved that even right before budget, so want to see where we're at in terms of timeline for the RFP, and then also for the Parks Master Plan, and kind of see what would be the timeline to get that out and completed. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we can get you those updates formally, but both items are actually underway. I think we're much further along in the Public Safety Master Plan. Chief, if you want to come up and comment on that. And then, while she's coming to the front, on the Parks Master Plan, both the Parks Department Director Malanato and Director Clark from DARM, they're working together on creating the RFP to pull in the consultant for that plan. So both are underway, and I can give you some specific dates later.
Good morning, Council. Just to answer your question regarding the RFP for Communications, we just received, I believe it was a week ago, six, five to six companies that bid on that proposal to do the assessment. We have a team of three, PD, ISD, and ourselves will huddle and review those applications, select one, bring it to council, and we hope to have that to counsel for your approval to move forward with the assessment in September.
All right, and that's all the councilmembers I see punched up. Oh, Councilmember Brandau.
All right, thank you. My colleague here reminded me of a question, and so I guess I was kind of slumbering, but Bruce, my question is, about a year before we started the Public Safety Master Plan or the Parks Master Plan, we start talking about our bus plan in the city of Fresno, and I've asked a couple of times, we had a presentation by the engineering firm that studied. Where's that at now? Where are we at on that?
As I indicated during about a month ago, that we would be back sometime in September making a presentation on some recommended changes or some strategies for the council's consideration. So I would see something on the agenda within the next 30 days.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, I think the screen is clear, so just a couple of quick announcements for me. First, I wanted to let my friend, Vice President Capriello, know that I will be going to the Grizzly game tonight, myself and my friend, and be a part of that homestretch. So thank you for that encouragement, and I share your enthusiasm with having Fresno support our professional team. Thank you for saying that, and I'll be there, be there tonight. So I join with you in that. And I also just wanted to just comment on what I think was a phenomenal series of events yesterday with the visit by Representative John Lewis from Georgia, Congressman in Georgia's 5th District. He came to Fresno yesterday, as most of you know, he's a civil rights icon. This year is being the 50th. This year is the fifth, being the 50th year anniversary over the march over Edmund Pettus Bridge, and also the 50th year anniversary of the signing of the Voting Rights Act of 1965, which, you know, many believes one of the most pivotal pieces of legislation in this country. And he came to spend some time with us yesterday, invited here by the EOC and encouraged to come by Congressman Costa and myself. We were able to host him for a prayer luncheon, a screening and question and answer session, a screening of the movie Selma and a question and answer period with him, and then a dinner that night, yesterday evening. So just wanted to just comment and say it was phenomenal. I know I saw my friends, Paul Capriolio and Esmeralda Soria there at some of the festivities yesterday, just a remarkable time, an amazing human being. Fresno was blessed to have him with us for just a brief time. So wanted to just report back to my colleagues and say how fortunate we were as a city and a community to have him with us. So with that, thank you. All right, we will move right on to the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
To the agenda.
All right, we have a motion to approve? All right, we have a motion in second. All those in favor? All opposed? All right. We're now moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have any council members that would like to remove any item from the consent calendar? Councilmember Soria.
I wanted to poll the Oversight Committee, was it 1 Accountability and Oversight Act?
1H.
Councilmember Capriolio.
1C and 1E.
All right. All right, we will now take the consent calendar out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. We have item 1H up. Councilmember Soria, the floor is yours.
Mine?
1H.
Okay. So I just wanted to-
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I've got to bring it back to the dais. We needed to make a motion to adopt the remaining of the, remainder of the consent calendar.
So move.
All right. So all those in favor? All opposed? All right. The, yes, city attorney? Oh, the item passes 6-0 with Councilmember Brand absent. Councilmember Soria.
So on this item, on the Enterprise Accountability and Oversight Act, the mayor has, the mayor's office has proposed an amendment to the criteria, and I know back in March when this was discussed, the criterion kind of experience, I brought up some, I guess my opinion as regard in terms of the makeup of it, and so I just wanted to add an amendment. So I wanted to make a motion to allow that up to one council appointment would be, would not be required to have the private sector experience as outlined on the act. Did I, is that my motion?
I understand it, yeah. I think you could do that.
Okay.
So in addition to one of the mayor's appointments not requiring construction experience, one of the council appointments would not be required to have construction experience also?
Correct. Up to one. Yeah, an additional, sorry, an additional.
Oh, instead of nine members then, there would be 10 members?
Mm-hmm.
You want to let Councilmember Brand, I think- Council- Councilmember Brand, we want to comment on that.
For the reminder, yes, I discussed this with Councilmember Soria. So currently it was, it's a nine total appointments, two by the mayor, one each by the council. And the mayor's amendment allows one of her two appointments, I call it a member of public at large with that. So your amendment would be to add one of the seven council selections by anybody individually can be a member of the public at large. So if that's the amendment, I second it.
Yes.
All right. So we've correctly captured the amendment?
Madam Clerk.
You can either vote on the amendment, or you can take it as that is the item as amended.
Yeah.
Councilmember Soria could make a motion to approve the item with that change.
Councilmember Soria, how would you like to take the item?
Okay, I want to see what my colleague says about my proposed amendment.
Well, Councilmember Brandow is next.
Okay. Can I hear the comments before?
Certainly. All right.
I don't have my, my choice for that committee has not been made, so I'd love to submit my choice as a member at large, if that's possible.
So you'd support my amendment?
I would support and, and make a request that I could make that selection.
The, I don't know if we're talking about the actual appointments today, though, Councilmember Brandow. I think we're talking just about, are you trying to make an appointment today?
No.
Okay.
No. No, I'm not. So proceed to the next.
Okay.
Counsel, in light of that comment, it may need to clarify which council member gets to make the appointment that's not having the construction experience.
I have a solution for that.
I'm going to say it's the council president, but go right ahead, Councilmember Olivier.
The, because it has to be nine votes to keep it, what about having this person from the public as an observer and a non-voting member? That way, each one of us can, what we're trying to, I mean, the original intent of this was to have a panel of experts. And so instead of diluting that with laymen, and we've already had this debate about experts in the field and laymen and the benefits and drawbacks to that, so that's not part of what the comments I'm trying to make. I think that what we could do is continue to, because then it's exactly what Mr. Sloan says, then one of us has the ability to appoint whoever we want, and it could be someone off the street or a friend or anything like that. But in the spirit of trying to keep it as a panel of experts, what about if the extra person would be a non-voting member of the committee and can observe, can participate, can offer, but just not vote? And then that way, we preserve the nine, the council has, each one of us has our appointment of experts, and then the mayor has her two appointments, and then that 10th person can be a non-voting participatory observer. That would be my, that would be the solution I would offer.
Councilmember Brand.
Well, either way, the question's going to be, who makes the selection? Let's say it's the 10th person and it's a public, I mean, it's a non-voting, then still, we have, there's got to be a remedy on how, if first come, first served?
First come, first served.
I guess, is that, maybe Brandow's, is that the way you-
I think it would be first come, first served.
So the first one to submit an application?
Yeah. I think many of us already have, I already appointed an expert as mine, so I think it would be first come, first served. So whoever fills it in terms of their application.
Are you okay with the 10th member being a non-voting member?
I would, my preference would be that they would have an ability to vote. That would be my preference.
Okay, so I'm going to weigh in really, really, really quickly.
No, we're not adding.
So let me, no, no, let me just, let me just shed a little bit more clarity or not on this. So right now, we're talking about adding a 10th member, correct?
No. The motion is to, one of the selections.
Okay, so, so let me just say that I'm not exactly sure that's the wisest course of action. I think we should probably add a 10th person, whether they're voting or not, it really, I don't have a particular feeling about that one way or the other. And what that would require would be that all of us as council members would then have to appoint an expert, and then that 10th person, whomever comes in, we could submit an application to us or the mayor, and then we can, we can make a selection off of that. I think that may be the fairest way to do that, this first come, first served. Obviously, Councilmember Brandow has already staked out his claim as the, you know, the at-large member, so I think maybe we should have, all of us would have to appoint an expert, and then to do it fairly, we receive applications for the at-large member, and maybe this body decides who that at-large member is, or the council president appoints the at-large member. Is this going to be an annual thing, Councilmember Brand? The committee is going to have to be reappointed every two, it's every two years? So every, okay, so then, yeah, and I think the 10th person is probably appointed by the council president every other year.
Do they vote?
I don't care if they vote or not, honestly.
They have a tie, no tiebreaker.
Well, I mean, in the case of a tie, it just fails, the item fails.
Well, council, there is already one additional member that's appointed, one council member is appointed as a non-voting member.
So we're now talking about 11 people?
That's correct. That the council member, member is not voting, you could have that person be the tiebreaker.
Councilmember Brandow.
Well, you kind of answered a couple of my questions. So for me, I think we should pull it, pull the item today, continue it. You should make a proposal that we get to vet, you know, with some time, with some thought in it. I've got council members that want to make sure it's a non-voting position and ties and the number of people on there. Then there's a big question as to how we determine this person, because really, it could be hypothetically very political, right? So because of that, we should get that all nailed down ahead of time. That's my opinion.
I would, I would think that's the wisest choice. Councilmember Olivier.
I concur.
Councilmember Brand.
Yeah, I think it's better just to, and I'll work with you if you want to bring it, let's think it out, and anybody we pick will still be vetted because it's still got to go through a confirmation, correct, city attorney by the council? Any nominee that we have goes on the agenda, and we have, and the council itself will approve that selection, correct?
The act doesn't provide for a council confirmation of the appointees.
Okay. Well, then, I think I would concur. Let's just think it out, bring it back. One other alternative would be there's a council member on the committee that is currently designated as a non-voting member. So you might say, in the event, let's say there's 10, then you could say the council member could then, like the vice president, could cast a vote to break a tie, possibly. It's just an alternative.
Okay. So I think as it stands, that it sounds like there's a consensus here that we want to table this item and allow, allow Councilmembers Soria and Brand to maybe work on a few of the finer details and bring it back to council for full vetting. City Attorney, do we need a motion to do that, or can we take that by consensus?
You would have the discretion to do that by consensus.
All right, I think it's been so decided. Thank you. All right, item 1C and 1E, Cap, you're up, and you can take them in any order you like.
Thank you on item 1C with Parks Resolution. I just, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
Good to see you. It's been a while. I just wanted to encourage you to consider and take a look at the Discovery Center. It seems to be a facility that meets the criteria for this type of resolution in that it's a high-poverty area, and it's a great vehicle, and you and I have been there a few times, and I think it's a great vehicle to encourage families and children of this poverty-stricken area that there's remedies and things that can be done for the family and the kids at that Discovery Center. So I just, basically, just wanted to encourage you to-
Okay. It's a great recommendation. I am embarrassed to say I wish I'd have thought about it. I will contact them and we'll put them in the, in the cycle for next year if they're willing.
I sure appreciate that. Thank you very much, sir.
No problem.
Thank you. And on to item 1E. I don't know if people in the audience have-
Really quickly, Cap, did you want to-
I was going to make a motion for both items.
I don't know, I don't know if you can do them at the same time. I think you got to take them-
I move to approve item 1C.
I'll second that, okay. We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Brandow. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item passes. Go right ahead.
And, could you come up, please? Could you give a little bit of detail on what's happened with 1E?
Sure. The council, council approves how healthcare premiums are determined, and they have made a determination in the past that when all other employees had, the city contribute 80% towards the premium, the council voted that elected officials would have 80% contributed towards the premium. We have been, through negotiations, changing that with almost all of our bargaining units. We only have one left, and they have tentatively agreed to it, a new plan that would be 75% of the rate that was in effect in FY '15, plus 50% of any future increases up to a cap of 30%, a maximum of 30% by employees. This would put elected officials on the same par with the employees.
And as I understand it, this is something that we as elected chose to do so we can conform and comply with our co-employees for the city of Fresno, put us all on the same basic page on contributions, and the amount that we are going to put in addition to our contributions, that will actually end up in the all-powerful general fund.
I'm not quite sure how to answer this. This would put you on par with all the other employees, have you contributing the same amount? Yes.
And it goes into the general fund, the amount that we-
It's an amount that goes to the healthcare trust to fund the healthcare benefits.
Perfect, perfect. I just want to put that on the record that as fellow employees, we want to stay consistent with everybody else in the, in the city employ, and we are coworkers, and we all work together, and we all play together, stand together, stay together, and I think this is a good illustration of, of that consistency that we seek through our, our local government. Thank you, Ken. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, submit motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item passes 7-0. Thanks, Councilmember Capriolio. We will now take our 2:00 item. Hearing to pertaining to the vacation of R Street and S Street alley between Tulare and Mariposa Streets.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the council. I'm Andrew Benelli with Public Works Department. We've received a request from the St. John's Catholic Church to vacate the alley between R Street and S Street, also between Tulare and, and whatever this street is here, anyway. We've not received any comments from the neighbors other than support, and staff recommends your approval. The church does own all of the property on the entire block, so there are no other property owners that are affected by this action. Thank you.
All right, we'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. District 3, I'll make a motion that we approve, staff's recommendation. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. We'll now move on to our 2:15 hearing, adopt a resolution, order the vacation of portions of East Thomas and the Thomas Harvey Alley between North Orchard Avenue and State Route Freeway 41. This is Council District 7. Staff?
Again, Andrew Benelli, Public Works Department. This is a request for a vacation. It comes, the request was made by the city's Parks Department, and this is property that's adjacent to Roman Playground. They'd like to vacate this street so that they could do additional park improvements. I believe a playground and some other improve, or a play structure and some other improvements are planned. We have not received any comments from any of the neighbors. I believe the city Parks Department controls the land on both sides of the street, so we're requesting your support for this vacation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, staff. We'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Olivier, this is your district.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 7-0. We'll now move on to our 2:30 item, hold a public, the, hold a public hearing and approve items related to the granting of a non-exclusive franchise for roll-off collection services. Staff?
Good afternoon, Council President, council. What you're seeing in front of you is the third leg of the approval process for a non-exclusive roll-off franchise. We are presenting that as a hearing so that the item can be heard before you, as well as we can have the, the hauler is present if you would like to hear from them as well. We've had no argument or dispute over this one so far, so this will be the 23rd non-exclusive franchise that we have approved within the city of Fresno.
All right, thank you. We'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. I don't have any council members. I'll make a motion that we approve. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 7-0. We will now take General Administration, item 2A. authorize the fire chief a designated executive contract with Mercury Associates for fleet management consulting services for fire department shop facility needs assessment and fleet operations review. Staff?
Good afternoon, council president, council. Uh, in front of you is a, um, the, um, recommendation that we execute the contract between Mercury and Associates for eighty-nine thousand two hundred dollars. It's a fleet management consultant service, uh, to assess our fire shop facility. Just a quick note, the scope of that work also includes the assessment and upgrade of the replacing of the fleet shop, fleet organization operational structure, uh, vehicle utilization, preventative maintenance and life cycle, parts and operations, inventory and other technology, uh, to effectively utilize fleet operations. This was in the adopted budget and it's, uh, in front of you for approval. Happy to answer any questions.
We'll now take this item out to the public, do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the, bring it back to the dais. I have a, I have a motion approved, we have a second, all those in favor? All opposed? Item passes, seven zero. We'll now move on to item two B, approve an agreement in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand with the Gordian Group, Inc., DBA, the Mellon Group for the implementation of a job order contracting program. This is airports, staff?
Good afternoon, council president, council members and city manager. I'm Debbie Bernard with the Department of Public Works Facility Management Division. What you have before you is a request to approve an agreement in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars with the Gordian Group, Inc., DBA, the Mellon Group for the implementation of a job order contracting program. Job order contracting, or JOC, is a unique indefinite quantity procurement process that helps facility and infrastructure owners complete a large number of repair, maintenance, renovation and straightforward new construction projects with a single competitively bid contract. Staff has been using a cooperative purchasing pilot program and has completed thirty projects throughout various city departments that have gone smoothly and have streamlined the bidding, purchasing and construction processes. The program has enabled staff to get smaller projects into construction at a quicker rate than typical design bid build projects. The JOC program is comparable to our requirements contracts and is based on a localized customizable unit price book with tasks specifically tailored for the city of Fresno. This agreement will enable staff to work directly with the Gordian Group to develop the city of Fresno's own unit price book, construction task catalog, which includes technical specifications for each of the construction tasks and general conditions that contain the specific contract language concerning the execution of the contract. Once the city of Fresno's construction task catalog is complete, staff will be able to go out to bid to obtain contracts with various trades to perform a variety of projects. The cost of procuring the projects will be less because staff does not have to repeat the entire procurement cycle for each project. The cost of construction is firm by the preset unit prices in the construction task catalog. This will give the city flexibility to perform smaller projects at a quicker pace if so desired. Therefore, staff is recommending council approve an agreement in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars with the Gordian Group, Inc., DBA, the Mellon Group for the implementation of a job order contracting program and to uphold the city manager's finding of exigent circumstances and unique qualifications for the agreement with the Gordian Group. The city is not obligated to utilize the JOC program for any project under the recommended agreement. The agreement will be funded through appropriations for specific projects and budgeted maintenance. Staff will be here to answer questions and a representative from the Gordian Group is here as well.
Thank you. We'll now take the item out to the public, do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Do we have any council members punched up? So, do we have, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? All opposed? Item passes, seven zero. We're on that, uh, six zero, I'm sorry, councilmember Olivier absent. We now have item two C. And this is a joint facility assessment workshop with the Parks Department. Sorry, it's Parks Department, Public Works and Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, council president, members of the council. Today we are presenting a joint workshop, um, on a facilities assessment, a program that was implemented about a year ago. We've begun looking at our facilities and you've heard me talk a lot about the cost of us owning various assets and in a lot of respects, the strategy implemented in the Parks Department over the last two to three years is, is reflective of that strategy, which is you got to make sure that you're taking care of whatever you own now before we go out and start adding more, uh, assets to our, our portfolio. As an organization, the city of Fresno probably owns millions of dollars of, of property. That could be in the way of parks, fire stations, police headquarters, stadiums, wastewater treatment facilities, et cetera. That does not take into account the value or the cost of maintaining those assets that are in all of our neighborhoods, such as streets, sidewalks, streetlights, trees, even, even the infrastructure that is below the ground, uh, pipelines, you know, sewer, water pipelines, things of that nature. As, uh, historically, this organization does not and has not taken into consideration the cost of owning, uh, many of these assets and in particular, uh, future replacement depreciation costs associated with, with these, these, these facilities. As I've shared with others before, uh, infrastructure is one of those things that is, uh, is only important when you're doing a ribbon cutting, uh, but not necessarily when you're replacing, uh, a bathroom at a, uh, that's now twenty years old at a park, and no one tends to want to show up for, for those kind of events, but they are just as important, um, as when the day that park was, was opened. Uh, as an organization, whenever things do come up and they have to be replaced, we have gone to, uh, we've issued bonds, so when the roof at the, at this facility needed to be replaced, we issued a bond. Need a new chiller, issue a bond. The Convention Center is a great example of forty years of deferred maintenance in which we put very little to no money back into that facility. And what do we do and how do we try to fix things like bad roofs and bad plumbing? We issued a bond. If we're not issuing bonds to cover these costs, we hope for, and, and in a lot of cases, again, as I use Parks as an example, we rely on grants or CDVG, which again, is in a lot of ways, another more than a grant. We do not, as an organization, set aside money for the future replacement costs, uh, of, of many of our facilities. So therefore, there's a significant investment that we need to make in, as we go forward, uh, in, as an organization in future budget years, uh, to begin to recognize and capture those, those costs. Now, the reason I picked, uh, these three particular divisions is because each one of them has a, a different strategy as to how they're going to go forward into, in funding these, uh, future expenses. So quickly, a facilities assessment or condition assessment is done to, first of all, determine what kind of shape, well, what's the condition of the current facility? Are there any immediate repairs that need to be made? And what are the future repairs that, uh, and replacement costs based on that assessment? Most importantly, uh, they're used to calculate what your life cycle costs or what your future reserves are. Interestingly enough, uh, we do this with our community facilities districts. Uh, we, we allocate and identify what the future life cycle costs are going to be for that CFD and, and the CFD rate is based on that, that future expense. Uh, those who manage like Mr. Bran homeowners associations, they do the same thing. In fact, it's a requirement, uh, under state law to show that you have sufficient reserves to cover future replacement costs of assets that are responsible or the ownership of the homeowners association. So, we use Fresno Area Express, uh, conducted their assessment about nine months ago, about, uh, as part of last year's budget. The reason I'm using them as one example because they're an enterprise apartment, no impact on the general fund, but they, uh, rely on grants in a lot of ways to, to fund their operation. Now, the good news when it comes to FACS, as we've discussed, FACS started setting aside over a half, about a half a million dollars for future replacement of assets that are not necessarily buses about a year or so ago. So, they have, the good news, about a million dollars in the bank, they have another half a million dollars, uh, budgeted for this year. The municipal service center is a little bit different in that it's an internal service account or fund. In a lot of ways, the city is the landlord and the, and the city departments who reside at the municipal service center are the tenants. So, like anybody else, their, their costs or their, the charges that we allocate to, to those user or, or tenants, user departments is based on a per square foot basis. And then last, uh, is Camp, uh, Camp Fresno. Now, Camp Fresno is, is owned by the city of Fresno, it is up at the end of Dinkie Creek Road up in the, the Sierra Nevadas. Uh, it's probably, I think it's eighty years, maybe older. Uh, it is managed by a, uh, operator under a management agreement, uh, but it too is one of those assets that's kind of sits out there that isn't, uh, necessarily on anybody's radar. Again, each example is going to require a different approach. So with that, I'm going to turn it over, uh, to Mr. Marshall, who's first going to, uh, talk about the assessment that was done at, uh, the FACS operations facility, followed by, um, Scott Mosier from our Public Works Department and then finishing up with Manuel Molina, uh, who will talk about Camp Fresno. So, Brian?
Thank you, good afternoon. Essentially, um, we've done a, the, the focus has been on, uh, passenger amenities and passenger improvements. Like, the capital investments have been in fixed route vehicles, uh, paratransit vehicles, uh, how do we repair and refresh Courthouse Park, uh, bus stop amenities, uh, technology, fare boxes, passenger counters, uh, video systems, things that, that will make the customer experience just that much easier. But the bigger picture is capital investment is also necessary in, in some of our indirect functions. How do we support, uh, Handy Ride facility? How do we, uh, support the, um, our main facility on G Street? Essentially, there's, um, twenty-two, twenty-three G Street, uh, our main property, where there are three buildings and two very large bus canopies, and I believe, uh, few of you have come out to actually visit even in my time. It's, it's a ten point eight acre facility that's around thirty-five years old. Uh, the, uh, we house the fixed route buses, uh, as well as we store a lot of our equipment, parts, uh, and materials. Essentially, the assessment that we had done, um, looked at the condition of the property, looked at the space needs, the electrical needs, uh, the lighting, uh, converting, uh, what we have from hand-drawn engineering to, uh, electronic. We looked at, uh, master planning, space planning, uh, and then a phased cost estimate. The, the reality is no way that we could go ahead and fix everything all in one moment, so we looked at how available funding would happen and, uh, and, and in that, uh, some of the highlights of that, the HVA system, the air conditioning system, uh, at thirty-five years old, you would imagine would be in poor condition after thirty-five years. The maintenance lifts, the bus wash, the bus vacuum system, uh, and, and just a quick side note on the bus vacuum system, it's a system where the bus pulls up, there's a, uh, a machine that fits in the front door of the bus and essentially the function is to draw the trash and dust out of the bus. Essentially, with the system that we have and based on the age, it's just moving everything forward. So, it almost ends up making us do double work because of the age of the apparatus. The CNG fueling system is ten years old, it's undersized. Uh, if you can imagine, almost one hundred buses going across the asphalt, the condition of the grounds, the pavement, clearly needs to be refurbished, refreshed. Uh, the, the vault room, the place in which we count money is, uh, it's a, it's about a ten by ten with two people working there and three machines, uh, it's shoulder-to-shoulder work, um, and it's, it's not reasonable. It's really not a reasonable place to function. And then we've got the, uh, the fire alarm and the security system, which is, uh, a, a pretty old system that needs to be updated. The numbers may be difficult here to see, but the reality is, uh, the phases one through three are phases that, um, we realize are on the needs list and not the wants list. Phases, uh, three through five, uh, four through five actually, uh, are things that sooner or later will have to be done, but in fact, uh, we found ways to kind of hold those things back. You're looking at a price tag of about twenty-four point seven million dollars over the course of fifteen years in order to keep us operating in a reasonable sense. And again, what this does not include are any kind of technology advancements or things that really would help us move and operate more efficiently. Uh, these are just primary needs that we know are, are necessary. So, what's it look like? Uh, essentially, to summarize, it's a thirty-five-year-old property, uh, most of the equipment is beyond its life cycle. We do what we can, but, um, tape and glue and, and gum won't always make it, so there's a need to invest. It's a twenty-four point seven million dollar price tag over, uh, fifteen years. Our current investment is, is around five hundred thousand dollars, uh, a year. Once you subtract the actual dollars that we have right now for grants, it leaves us, um, with a whole of about six hundred thousand dollars, an, an average of about six hundred thousand dollars per year, uh, needed. So, that's the FACS area.
Brian, really quickly, that, go back to that last slide? So, you, you said that, that actually you, we need an additional six hundred thousand after all the expenses are paid?
Yeah, the, the, if, if we did it on an average, the average amount to, to make the twenty-four point seven million was, I think, one point six million on average. Uh, right now, there's some available grant money, so we subtract out the grant money, which brings the total down to, um, I, I think it brought the total down to like seventeen million or so. And, and that's the difference between, uh, what we would project based on the five hundred thousand that we're putting in and the grant money, the remainder average per year would be about six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, got it.
And the municipal service center facility assessment, uh, Scott Mosier?
Good afternoon, Robert Anderson, not Scott Mosier, from the Public Works Department. This second presentation is covering the municipal service center. The municipal service center, which is a twenty-four acre site that is over on, off of Eldorado and G Street, houses various departments. It was built in nineteen seventy-six and not counting the, uh, the FACS facility that you just referred to, which also resides out there. It consists of, as you can see, the nineteen buildings, uh, vehicle shelters and approximately a hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet of enclosed building area as well as, uh, six hundred and seventy parking spaces. This shows you the site plan of the, uh, the remainder of the municipal service center. The type of departments that are housed here include, uh, fleet, public works, public utilities, parks, ISD and the police department. There, as the city manager would refer to as the renters of this facility. Staff hired EMG to, uh, do the study for this, uh, portion of the facility and their, uh, report was divided into, uh, immediate needs, deferred maintenance, capital replacements, plant improvements, which would include things like, um, energy usage reduction, and they also looked at ADA compliance. Here's the, uh, departments and/or divisions that reside out at the, uh, municipal service center. This is also shows you the breakdown in square foot. This is also shows you the breakdown in square footage that they occupy out there, and also it shows you a percentage of the total square footage and the number of employees that they have out there. As I said before, the facility's assessment divided itself into the immediate repairs and the deferred maintenance, which is like the action needed over two years, and capital renewal, which would be based upon the life expectancy of the rest of the equipment out there and/or buildings. This report actually looked for, looked at the facility for the next twenty years, starting in fiscal year fifteen. They're also looking at, like I said, the energy usage, trying to improve the usability of the facility, and reduce long-term maintenance. So, under the site improvements, they looked at our utilities, the parking areas, of course, drainage, the site improvements, and the ADA compliance out there, making sure that we are ADA compliant on the facility. They also looked at the buildings themselves, the interior-exterior walls, roofing, patios, doors, and that sort of items, and the mechanical and plumbing systems out there, plumbing, heating, air conditioning, vetting, the elevators, the electrical, fire protection, and security. The immediate repairs. The immediate repairs was estimated to be about two-point-six-million dollars. This includes what the study evaluated as immediate needs that were in fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Since we are currently in sixteen and the money, of course, is budgeted for these, for these needs this year, those three immediate need years were added up to hopefully take care of in fiscal year seventeen. Type of improvements that are necessary would be the boiler replacements, a chiller replacement, air handlers, and so on. As I said, the original assessment was for a period of twenty years. When they looked at the years, I guess, four through twenty, that, the needs for that totaled approximately eight-point-eight million, which brings the total for the municipal service center, of course, excluding the FACS facility, to eleven-point-four million. If in fact, the city were to try to cover the costs of the additional needs that are necessary out at the municipal service center, rent increase of approximately forty percent would be necessary to make up that additional revenue for those replacements. That ends my presentation, and we'll turn it over to Parks for Camp Fresno. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Emmanuel Molineto, the director of the Parks Department. In preparing the, this presentation for Camp Fresno, we went through a number of archival files, and we discovered these, the photographs that are up on the viewer right now. We estimate that these photos were probably taken during the late nineteen-twenty's or maybe early nineteen-thirties. We also came across a very interesting article written by the automobile sporting news dated nineteen-twenty-six, which talked about a dedication at Camp Fresno that was hosted by Raymond Quigley, my predecessor, who was then the city playground director, and apparently, a number of Fresno residents were up there to celebrate, you know, Camp Fresno. According to this newspaper article, it stated that Camp Fresno, that the city of Fresno had been operating the camp two years prior to that. So it really shows that the camp has been around for, you know, for quite some time and has really been a fixture in this community. The facilities, the facilities at Camp Fresno, Camp Fresno is, as the city manager mentioned, is located in the Sierra Mountains, adjacent to Dinkie Creek. It's approximately sixty-two miles from the city of Fresno, or about an hour and fifteen minutes, hour and a half drive from the heart of Fresno. The camp itself is operated by the city of Fresno, but it belongs to the Department of Fore, the U.S. Department of Forestry, and is approximately thirty, a little larger than thirty-seven acres. The camp consists of fifty-one rental cabinets, cabins, twenty-nine of which are one-bedroom cabins, and twenty-two are two-bedroom cabins. The, the two large dormitories or Camp Fresno Junior can accommodate up to ninety individuals wishing to use that group camping area. The camp also has a large spacious dining pavilion, clubhouse, restroom, showers, and a playground. The, a consultant was brought in to do an analysis of the infrastructure of the camp. Blair Church and Flynn Engineers did a very thorough analysis, and although all of the concerns that they expressed are legitimate, the department, realizing that there are some, there are serious fiscal restraints, feels that the priorities and the phasing should be done in a very different fashion, focusing in on the resources that we have available to do the, to do the improvements. The total costs, based on this analysis, were five-point-six million dollars, and that would be in today's dollars, so you can imagine what the cost would be over a fifteen-year period. The department does agree with the analysis regarding the water systems. We feel that establishing the, the water storage systems is extremely important, and we, we would, we are planning to try to proceed with that, with the given resources that we have. If you notice in the one picture where you have that large metal tank, those, there are two metal tanks located at Camp Fresno right now. Both of them are non-functioning. We need to get them out of Camp Fresno. The tall wooden structure is a historic water tank that's located at the camp. What the department did, or attempted to do, a number of years ago, was put in a plastic liner, fill it with water, and it worked for several years, but the liner now has leaks in it, so we're not able to hold the amount of water that, you know, that the tank is really designed for. The consultants have recommended that we put in a, an eight-thousand-dollar polyethylene, an eight-thousand-gallon polyethylene tank inside that wooden tank, so we still keep the historic redwood tank, but then we would be able to operate it with an eight-thousand-gallon tank located within the, that structure. In addition to that, the consultant is recommending that we put in two additional polyethylene tanks, so that we can have sufficient water storage up on the hill. The department, in last year, put in a new well. One of the recommendations there is to build a, put in another five-thousand-gallon polyethylene tank that within, have water provided from that new well into that tank, so that we would have water not only from up on the hill, but also down for the lower areas of the, of the camp. We are also faced with a very serious problem that the original piping that was put in over at Camp Fresno was made out of galvanized metal, which is quite ancient. Much of that metal has corroded on the inside, which really restricts the amount of water that flows through those pipes. In addition to that, you have a lot of seismic activity up there. You also have a lot of roots that have literally lifted up the pipes, which cause tripping hazards and have made those pipes even more susceptible to damage, so we have a number of leaks going, within the pipe system up there. You also have issues regarding the, the sections that have actually been replaced with modernized plastic pipe. We've had a number of concessionaires operate the camp over the years for us, and unfortunately, as they've replaced sections, nobody's ever kept accurate as-built drawings. So the consultant is recommending that all of the water lines be taken out and replaced with new plastic PVC. We disagree with that approach because of the cost and feel that we should identify problem areas and replace sections of the water lines based on how, based on our resources and also based on the more problematic areas. The sewage system in Camp Fresno is also a problem. The sewage pipes that presently exist over there, or the majority of the sewer pipes that exist over there, were made out of cast iron. Again, many of those pipes have been, have come to the surface because of the roots from trees and also because of the seismic, the seismic issues that we have up there. So you have a number of leaks, plus you have a large amount of root intrusion from the trees into the sewer systems, which have created some serious stoppages. Unfortunately, when the system was first put in, there weren't that many cleanouts put into the system, so it's really been very problematic trying to clean them because of the fragile nature of these very ancient pipes. Again, certain sections have been replaced over the years, but because we do not have as-built drawings at the present time, we really don't know how much of this, how many of these lines were actually replaced. Again, we disagree with the consultant, where their recommendation says replace all of the sewer lines. I think our, the most prudent approach would be to look at the areas that are most problematic, replace those sections, keep accurate as-built drawings, and come up with a schedule where eventually, over time, we could have all of those pipes replaced. In addition to the pipes, we have some serious concerns about the septic system. The septic tanks are made out of steel. You can imagine how the condition that they're probably in at this point, they're the original tanks that were put in at Camp Fresno. Fortunately, we've not had too many problems with them right at this point. We feel that the piping is much more important, but we also need to look at the replacement of the septic tanks with, with polyethylene tanks, so that we can collect all of the refuse that comes through the, the piping system. Finally, the consultant recommends that all of the cabins eventually be replaced. I, for one, disagree. I think one of the things that makes the camp charming is its rustic nature. I feel that the camps can be refurbished on a, on a routine basis. You have to remember that the, that the camp is located up in the Sierras. Fortunately, or unfortunately, we've not had too much snow up there, so the damage in the last three or four years has been minimal up there. But during heavy snowfalls, you do have a lot of damage because of the seismic, the seismic issues. Some of the cabins do tend to periodically come off of their base. Every spring, when the, the operator arrives, takes over the camp and prepares it for the, for the coming summer's use, they, they set the cabins back up on their proper footings. They take care of any dry rot issues. Part of the contract that we have with the concessionaire right now is that every year, they have to paint one-third of the cabin, so every three years, all of the cabins, you know, are, are painted. But as any older structure, it does need a lot of work. Again, if and when we ever have the resources to go and totally refurbish the cabins, I feel very strongly that we really need to keep the flavors, the flavor of the cabins because of the fact that they are quite historic. In closing, I would just like to say that Camp Fresno provides a historic and unique outdoor opportunity that gives our visitors an early twentieth-century family camping experience. I will be coming to the, before the council in the near future with a proposed master fee schedule, fee increase for Camp Fresno, and I would hope that you would support us. And that concludes my presentation.
Emmanuel, you may, you may have said this on a, on an earlier slide, but, and I could have, could have missed it. What are we estimating the costs of the Camp Fresno facilities upgrades we need?
So let me, let me get, that's a follow-up slide, so I'll get, I'll get into what that delta is. So, based on these assessments, we've got a little bit mix of good news and a little bit of work in front of us. So in the case of Fresno Area Express, in summary, again, as the director pointed out, it's thirty-five years old. Yeah, I was there when they first opened it, so I remember the day we cut the ribbon and everyone that was there, and it was, I'm trying to remember the mayor, young man at the time. Anyway, I know, they're hot kids, sometimes when you get old. Nevertheless, it's thirty-five years old. There's about twenty-four, twenty-five million dollars of deferred or ongoing maintenance. Good news, budget, the department already budgets a half a million dollars. There's a million dollars set aside, and on an ongoing basis, they're, they're going to need to identify another six-hundred-thousand dollars annually to cover that delta and/or continue to pursue or find other grant dollars to pay for these capital improvements. Municipal Service Center, again, a little bit of good news, bad news. It's thirty-nine years old. It's eleven-point-four million dollars in deferred maintenance, two-point-six million needed in immediate repairs, and a forty percent rent increase is needed to help fund that cost. Now, there's where a little bit of the good news, bad news is depending on if you're a landlord or a tenant. If you're a landlord, the good news is that we've only been charging like ninety-eight cents a square foot, all in, including utilities. That's a heck of a deal. And so, in a lot of ways, the city has been a very gracious landlord, but at the expense of its asset. So a forty percent increase, which would be passed on to the tenants through increases in ISF charges probably next year, only brings them in a little bit south of a dollar forty a square foot, which in this market is still a reasonable expense.
Bruce, are we talking about doing incremental increase of forty percent or just a one-time forty percent?
A one-time. Okay. Now, remember, most of the tenants are enterprise departments.
I, I get it. I get it. I just was asking.
Where's Tommy at? Parks is a little bit different, and it is an eighty-nine-year-old facility, and no, I wasn't around when they did that ribbon cutting. The deferred maintenance cost, it's approximately five-point-six million dollars. Now, here's where Mr. Molineto pointed out, he, we will be looking at a master fee schedule adjustment. Right now, under the current agreement, which will also be going out to bid management agreement, we net less than thirty-five thousand dollars a year. The delta between that and what is needed to fund on an ongoing basis is approximately two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. They need about two-hundred to three-hundred thousand dollars on an ongoing basis to maintain that asset.
So that number would allow the park to function and put in something in the reserve for, for a...
They would need to generate a net of two to three-hundred thousand dollars annually to pay for the expenses that were outlined in the previous slide.
Okay. So what is that, what's the gross number, then? When you say a net of two-hundred or three-thousand, you mean?
Means that rather than generating thirty-three thousand dollars a year,
Three-hundred thousand.
We got to figure out a way to generate two to three-hundred thousand.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Now, the other option is that we can pursue grants, but I understand those grants are probably the same grants that we pursue or for our parks down here in the valley. As we talked about, the other alternative is to increase the reservation rates. This facility is booked out within one to two weeks, that as soon as the reservation system is opened up. It is in high demand. I've also been told, don't know if it's true, it may be anecdotal, may not be, but a lot of the reservations are coming from outside the area, outside the community. So, looking at, at the market, there is absolutely a demand and probably an opportunity to take advantage of that demand by increasing the reservation rates. And then the last alternative, which is not a great alternative for anybody, given the competing priorities, is that there's, there would be an increase in the general fund subsidy to cover the cost of holding that asset. Now, some may say, well, why don't you just sell it? Well, again, as the slide pointed out, we don't own the underlying property. It's on a ninety-nine-year lease with the Department of Forestry, and so at the time that that lease expires, that property has to be returned back to its natural state.
And when is the lease up? If it's eighty-nine years old, when is the lease up?
Eighty-nine, ninety-nine. We've probably got ten, fifteen years left on that lease.
So, just, so are we talking about renewing the ninety-nine-year lease?
Most of the time, the Department of Forestry will allow you to renew those leases.
So before we put all of the, the cost and maintenance?
That's another thing we'll have to look at.
All right.
And then finally, as I said, this is, this is a strategy that was implemented about a year or so ago. We've done one on the stadium already. The good news about the stadium is that it's in good shape. The bad news about the stadium, it's a fourteen-year-old stadium, believe it or not. And so, in order to cover those future costs, we are looking at... And so in order to cover those future costs, we are looking at, and when we negotiate, hopefully maybe a new lease agreement, there are going to be costs associated with holding that stadium or holding that facility like anything else. Assessments that are scheduled for this year, we just signed an agreement to have an assessment done on all of our parking garages. We've done an initial analysis that shows that the holding cost of just the garage, it's a $70 a stall, and that assumes 100% occupancy. It means that stall, every stall is filled every minute that the garages are open. That does not take into account the depreciation or the future deferred maintenance-related expenses that we're going to need to cover. We're going to do a similar assessment on the convention center. If you recall, about a year or so ago, we did an energy efficiency audit, which has netted at least $300,000 a year in savings and energy costs. We are also have now reached a point where all of our long-term agreements, including apes, include apes fees. So those dollars need to be obligated towards a very, again, what will probably be a very long list of deferred capital. City Hall is on the list as well for this year. Again, this will be a discussion around what do we charge the tenants in this building? How we allocate that expense? This facility, Sal, is what going on 24 years old? And like anything else, we've already had to replace, for lack of a better term, is our air conditioner and the generator that we need to support this building. And then last but not least, the police headquarters is also a facility that we are going to have assessed this year to determine what are the long-term holding costs, lifecycle costs of that facility? And at what point do we run out a room from a, from a size standpoint and have to look at other facilities in order to house things like 911 or other operations within that department? So with that counsel, that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. This item will not be going out to the public as it's just a workshop and we will not be taking any action today. So this will just be a discussion among council members. So I have every council member punched up. We'll start with the council member, Brandon.
Okay, the first question is the obvious question. How did we ever get all this stuff? I know it was done years and years ago, like Camp Fresno, the art museum, Yew's Home and stuff. And I realize that you just can't walk away from 100-year leases. But on the Camp Fresno, is there any possible way to say, you know, Fresno County, you take over the facility?
If I was Fresno County, I'd get some real short arms. But one, we could actually look to see if there's someone who would like to take the full responsibility and assign that 99-year lease to a management firm or somebody who would have the, the ability to make the investments needed and run that camp as a private venture.
Well, what I'm thinking is, you know, maybe a private sector, you know, that comes in, it's set up as a, maybe a facility for at-risk youth, those kind of things. I think we need to explore those opportunities, you know, and there might be something there. Because the city clearly doesn't have the resources to do benevolent things. And like years ago, when I first came here, that first year, during budget time, all the nonprofits lined up. And of course, by 2010, 11, they were all gone. But that's a sign of the times. We don't have the money to fund these things. So if you just ask, you know, that you explore, maybe we could look at opportunities to, to, excuse me, to add those. And I want to add to that, you know, that facilities, capital improvements are, been, you've been around for a long time, Bruce, and I'd say this probably been going on for 50 years at this city, probably most cities, state of California. I mean, right now, everybody's talking about the, the road infrastructure, you know, bridge infrastructure, dam infrastructure, all of the entire state, that I believe is an impending crisis for all of us. Because I don't see any solutions at the other levels too. And I know from my own experience as an asset manager, that failure to properly maintain, you know, facilities, structures, infrastructure will in certain cases almost exponentially elevate the cost. And we need not look any further really than our, that big debate we had earlier this year on the Water Capital Project. Had that project been done 10 years earlier, I, I could say fairly close, I don't know if Tommy's here, probably about half the cost. I mean, that's the price you pay. So, you know, you got to find a way to, to meet these needs. A lot of this stuff really integrates very closely into the Asset Management Act that we passed last year, that I know, I spoke to you earlier, they're close to coming, their presentation to the council on their strategic, you know, view of Fresno and what their plans are. But we're talking about trying to find funding sources when, you know, we don't have enough police and fire and parks and all the sidewalks and streets, that I think the way to do this is to, to value-added opportunities, as we discussed a year ago. For example, you know, like the immunity yard. Having these guys, these professional brokers and leasing people, look at these facilities. And let's say, I don't know if we have them or not, let's say there's 50,000 square feet and we've got 20,000 square feet vacant. Should somebody be out there trying to find a private party to lease that space out? And you could, you could look at City Hall and all the different stuff, that was discussed. And you and I have discussed recently is the, the opportunity for these electronic signs strategically on all the city locations near 41, 180, and all the freeways. And, and I know there's, I believe, over a million dollars for the city of Fresno in annual revenue. So I think, you know, and I went back to the Reserve Management Act that I wrote in 2011. And there was a section under facility, capital facilities expenditure fund. And, and the way I wrote that, I, I wrote it very carefully because I realized at the time, we had so many things and only so much money. So there's a replenishment, you know, policy that you replenish when it falls to like 50% level. There's a phase sizing. The way it says that we're supposed to dedicate 1% a year of the general fund towards facility improvements. You know, so that's what, you know, 2.3, 2.5 million, or three, say $3 million from last year. And I know we, we, we came up with some money for the streets, but it said, even in my policy, you know, phasing at a quarter, a half, escalating up, then it puts a priority of 1 to 10, 10 being the highest. This was ranked six, that we'd find a way to take these, you know, these multiple projects and priorities out there and try to balance them out and find a way to fund. But I think really the, the solution here is through the economic, the Asset Management Act, to find these deals and like Woodward Park. I know there's active interest, because I'm on that committee for the Shinjin Gardens, to bring in, for example, a restaurant and a, a facility that would do like weddings and receptions on a ground lease where the revenues that the city would collect would be dedicated, let's say for that case, to Woodward Park. We can get other sources and dedicate them citywide and specifically to certain venues. So I think we have to do something as a, as a council to address this issue. And, and we're never going to get it 100%, but if we can just identify, you know, 1%, just $3 million a year, which I think is definitely within, you know, the capability that we have, I think we can take on these, these projects that were, you know, that we, that are like this convention center we did about two or three years ago. We had $8 million, right? That was the identified deal. And that we said that the savings that we generated, like the P G and E bill and the management fees and the other stuff, it was, you know, probably close to a million dollars counting the, the new co-promotion program. Now we dedicate those funds to that facility because if you just pull it out for some emergency, then it's never going to be there. It has to be set aside as a dedicated fund. That's in my opinion. So I don't know what we need to do, because it's really laid out in that reserve management policy, how to set that money aside. But I want to thank you for really bringing this to the forefront. And I know you and I have talked about this for seven years. You know, it's, it's on the path, but we as a council, now we're starting to slowly, you know, rise and find money to restore services that, and again, with so many things out there, you know, that this does not get lost in the shuffle, that it's to me important. Thanks for you and the staff for all your time on this.
Councilmember Capriellio.
Thank you. Bruce, you know me and my timeliness and all, I didn't get this until, I don't know, after 3 o'clock yesterday. So I honestly have to tell you, I didn't read it. I did have a chance to read this, but again, if we can get this information to us sooner, it's always better. And, and the PowerPoint itself, if that was given to us, we could, it's easier to follow and create and generate questions from that if we have it in advance. So it's, so quite frankly, I was paying attention, but sort of, because I couldn't track it all without some frame of reference.
Yeah, we, we, we had the PowerPoint out yesterday morning. So I apologize that you didn't get that or the, because we also distributed the report yesterday morning as well.
Well, we, I didn't get it until the afternoon, so. But it's still, I think 72 hours is a magical time and that's still within that period. But again, it's, just makes our job more comprehensible, more effective, et cetera.
It's a lot, it's a lot of information to try to absorb all at once.
Absolutely. But in looking at the Camp Fresno, it seems like from your comments, it's mostly non-Fresno people.
Don't know that for a fact, but I'm all saying there's a lot of demand for that facility.
It kind of makes sense based upon my YMCA experience and my mountain experience with, with cabins and so forth. However, if the lease is only 10 to 12 years, maybe, maybe 15 years, I hate to say it, but I think we should perhaps plan on its demise rather than spending the money that's been quoted in this particular subject matter. I know that's not good for the residents of Fresno, but to go from $30,000 to $300,000, I don't know of any way we can do that. And our general fund money is, is really, seems to be really geared toward those public safety issues, which are extremely important, perhaps more important than recreation at that facility, not recreation within the city where our residents participate and are involved in our parks and the other programs that we have. So it seems to me that we ought to try to save up the money to restore it to, back to nature. I'm just commenting off the top of my head, having just briefly looked this over, so. And then my other question was on the cost of analysis for these different, three different projects. Is there, was it expensive with Blair Church and Flynn, for instance, with Camp Fresno? Is that a lot of dollars to get this evaluation?
Forget, off the top of my head, I think it was less than 50. Our parking garage is less than 50. The FACS and Municipal Service Center, I think we brought back to council under an RFP because they are far more extensive. As you can imagine, those facilities are far more complex than, than a series of camp, cabins and, you know, a septic system that's 90 years old.
It seems that, that you in particular, because of your vast experience, kind of know the areas that are in most disrepair and also know the ability to put them back in repair, so to speak. So I would suggest that rather than spending money on various items like this, because we know, I think the fate of this has already been determined, but I'm always keep my mind open for ideas and suggestions, like you said, private enterprise or nonprofit. However, if we can pick the top five things that we can afford to fix and, and then apply an analysis to give us more details, that might be more efficient use of our dollars than generally evaluating various facilities within our city that we already know are in disrepair. The whole, you know, the whole thing is pretty, pretty bad. No fault of anyone in particular, other than our economy. So I would just make that suggestion.
And that's why the facilities that I highlight are on the list for this year. The convention center probably represents one of the largest investments that we have. Our parking garages collectively is a very large investment. We just spent close to $6 million building a new garage, probably eight, 10 years ago, maybe longer. No money being set aside to maintain that asset. So if you look at them from a portfolio, convention center, parking garages, certainly from a space sizing, police headquarters, given its age, and, and then more important, this, this facility itself, which is relatively speaking compared to other investments or assets, is relatively new. But again, our per-square-foot cost that we charge, it's not capturing, you know, with the replacement of carpets or chairs or anything else over time that have to be accounted for later on. So that's why I use these, just, we did the stadium, for example, last year as well. The reason I chose these as examples, because again, one was an enterprise department, kind of stands on their own, but they need to set money aside. The next one is an ISF, and while it's not directly a general fund impact, it's an overhead expense that'll eventually find its way back to the general fund. And then the last one, while not a direct general fund, it is an example of what happens when you outsource or have someone else operate an asset and you're not like the convention center, not taking the dollars, investing them back into the facility or over time, not adjusting your rates appropriately in order to fund the ongoing cost of owning that asset.
Well, I, I want to commend you and your staff on that fact. You've taught us all about sinking funds and maintenance and, and that lesson is well received. And we're doing our best to help you and everyone get through that particular crisis. And it seems like it's with our road repairs, you know, do you do a slurry coat or do you do an overlay? And the older parts of town, like my district, the overlay seems to be the only option. Some of the newer areas, slurry coat will work. But do you do the slurry and try to keep that alive? Or do you go to the older neighborhoods and revitalize? It's just, they're, they're just all difficult, tough calls across the board. But I know you're working hard toward it and benefiting our city and, and always have our support in that regard. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Brandow.
Well, Bruce, I actually, I'm not going to say a whole lot, except to say, this is an awful lot to digest. So each one of the different departments that reported about their, their needs, I mean, really deserves their own day, you know, to digest it all. So for instance, and I've already heard CAPS questions, is now we're just focused on the last one that you just presented, which is Camp Fresno, right? And it's almost like the other ones are off of, off of our mind right now. I, is Camp Fresno, is it worth bringing it and doing a workshop just on Camp Fresno and understanding how the vendor situation is working?
We could actually do that because we need to, I believe, issue a new RFP for a vendor agreement. And so one of the things I was going to work with the Parks Department is restructuring that vendor agreement in order to, in combination potentially with an increase in reservation fees, be able to identify additional costs or additional opportunities to generate revenue, to fund the needed infrastructure. But we could certainly do a workshop on what the current agreement is and maybe the history of the, the facility itself.
And then including how many people from outside of the area are using these? So, you know,
Market analysis.
For instance, at Woodward Park, we, we charge a different price for residents of, we don't do that anymore?
No, we just charge everyone the same thing.
Oh, okay. I know that I get charged that. So it, so when did that, did that change in?
It, it did because it was too onerous. One time it was $5 for outside residents, now it's just $5 for everybody. And that's, that's the same thing at roading as well.
Oh, okay. I thought the prices just went up. So in other words, they don't ask that question anymore?
No.
All right, cool. What's that?
Oh, yes. People tend to walk in to where we're parking, they're not charged.
And that is not a good, I wish you hadn't have said that publicly. I'm just kidding, because I did.
They walk into roading.
I, what's that?
They walk into roading as well.
They walk into roading as well. Yep, no. And I was guilt, I was making a joke, because I was guilty of that. I was one that used to park across the street at the heart hospital and then walk in. So I don't do that any longer, put that on the record. But, but, but we could hypothetically, you know, with a little bit of upgrades to these facilities, we could charge more and we could charge more for people outside of the area. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if you don't mind, I would like, I would like you to schedule a little workshop at least on just Camp Fresno, because I, I came up with a lot of questions and we would end up, and I know Councilmember Soria's got some questions as well, so. And then for me, on the big picture, everything that you included in this packet, now the odds are, it's just so much for me that I'm probably going to have to have some meetings with the individual departments on, on these things, so.
There's executive summaries, so that, in each one of those. So that might make it easier than rather trying to digest the volumes of analysis that are behind each one of the...
And so these studies were in works for a while. Okay. So you just basically had to wait until they were, weren't trying to, because it seems like it could have been done prior to budget and some of it worked into budget, but just wasn't ready?
The one from the Municipal Service Center and FACS has just recently been done.
Okay, okay. All right, thanks.
As you can imagine with these facilities, it's, it's very entailed. Actually hiring engineering firms to come in and make it a... Actually hiring engineering firms to come in and make an assessment, uh, of your facility. So you can imagine electrical, mechanical, you've got a very broad representation of the, of the different disciplines, uh, involved in something such as, such as one we did at the Corp yard and at FACS.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, before we go to Councilmember Soria, we, we may wanna have somebody follow Councilmember Brandow around, make sure he's not walking into the parks for free anymore. And I'll make him hold to his word. Councilmember Soria. There's security cameras, okay, yeah.
So, thank you, Bruce, and thank you to all the other, um, department heads for your presentation. Same, just some of the same, um, kind of questions that were raised by my colleagues. So I won't repeat too much of it, but it is a lot of information. Um, so I'm hoping that, you know, we break it down in the, in kind of the smaller, more detailed, where we can ask much more in-depth questions, once I get a chance to really go through this. But, um, just as it relates to Camp Fresno, I know, um, my council colleague just asked a couple of questions regarding, um, the keeping track of attendees, because there may be an opportunity there, um, since this camp, we do reservations ahead of time, right? So it won't be as onerous as maybe it would be, um, or it was with our local parks to maybe have a different rate for outside, outside folks. So, um, looking at that and making that a consideration as we look at, um, increasing revenues. Also, just wanted to know, uh, when was the last time that we raised, um, the rates for reservations? Do we know?
It was in two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six.
It was the last time.
Two thousand and six.
And I looked at that report and interestingly, not, it did not include what the projected increase in revenue would generate. There's a long list and that list was even interesting, because, uh, I do not believe that that list was generated based on any kind of this, uh, study. So I think the advantage that we have is that when we do this workshop, we, we, we've got now an engineer's estimate as what the, what the target is and what would need to be adjusted in order to generate that kind of revenue.
Okay. And then the, the other question that I had was it, um, it's related to, I guess, outreach. How do we promote, um, Camp Fresno? Because I, I don't think I ever really.
We don't really have to and don't. Uh, it is one of those facilities that, um, families, generations of families have visited. They know about it. When the reservation window opens, they make the reservations as they have for generations and it's basically booked out almost immediately.
So is it year-round, pretty booked?
No, no. Camp Fresno opens depending on, uh, the amount of snowpack that we get sometime around Easter and, and closes sometime after the Labor Day weekend, which is also an interesting little dynamic in that for, for a number of years, school didn't go back into session until after Labor Day weekend. Well, now schools are going back into session two or three weeks before Labor Day. So the, the, the market has shifted, because those families who used to stay up there for a week, even up to Labor Day weekend, no longer do that, because their kids are already back in school. But we can provide that analysis for you as well.
Okay. Um, and then just curious as to, with our Parks Department, do we do any, do we do any recreational activities that encompass Camp Fresno, maybe during the off-time? Do we take advantage of it as a facility ourselves?
Off-time, depending, again, on snowpack, you can't get to the facility.
Oh, you can't. But lately.
It's snowbound.
But even lately, where we haven't had, as mentioned?
We haven't been, because you don't wanna schedule something and all of a sudden, you know, everyone was thinking it would snow. Your, this facility is near six thousand feet. And so you, during normal winters, you, you could have that camp. Well, one, you don't have any working water, because as Manuel pointed out, some of the water system is above grade. So you can't have an operating water system, because the water in the pipes would freeze. Probably all the other infrastructure is frozen and the cabins are not accessible because of snow. So we haven't used this facility off-season, other than maybe we bring, uh, we bring some kids up to the camp early on spring for a science program, so they understand how the water flows in off the Sierras, through Wishawn, through Shaver Huntington, down into the San Joaquin Gorge. But other than that, uh, that facility is booked out and managed by an outside third party.
Thank you.
Councilmember Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Bruce, some years ago, uh, when we did something similar to this on, uh, facilities that the city owned, and I think we were just kinda scratching around a little bit, looking for some money and, uh, what, um, you know, what, where we could find monies to do some improvements on other, uh, other properties that we had. And we put, uh, there was, uh, a list was put together of the properties that the city had that we might be able to sell. And then, of course, with that came, okay, we gotta fix this, we gotta fix that before we can sell it. And, um, and then we also, I believe, looked at if it were, uh, if the buildings, uh, were currently being rented, that kind of thing. And, and so I don't know that we ever sold any of those, uh, of those properties. And, and one of the ones I recall is the, uh, the building down there on Van Ness that has a parking garage on top.
Garage nine?
Yeah. And, uh, and I know that we've got, uh, we've got those, uh, those spaces leased out. And I think there was a concern too, is, is everybody being current? The improvements that are going in, you know, is it, is it worth keeping? Are we getting, generating enough from the garage or is somebody operating that for us? And that kind of thing. So, um, have you done any of that? Looked at seeing what properties we might be able to, to sell to spend on, uh, moving the monies around to improve, uh, facilities that, that may need, that we wanna keep?
Uh, as, as, as Councilmember Brand pointed out, we recently entered into a contract with CBRE, who is currently doing an assessment of all the properties that we own, whether it's vacant or it's occupied. Once that study's done, they're gonna identify some opportunities in which we either should think about selling the property, increasing the per-square-foot cost of the property in order to capture the true cost. Garage nine is a good example. Uh, and in downtown, we're probably our own worst enemy, because we, we charge well below the market, uh, per-square-foot cost. Conversely, we don't put a whole lot of money back into the building either, so. Um, in order to make it viable, you would have to increase your rent in order to capture that additional revenue. Or you just make a decision that it is not cost-effective to continue to hold it as a government agency or entity and then give it to the private sector and let them sell it or let them rent it, knowing that they can, of course, not have to deal with a constituent who comes in and says, I can't afford it when you increase my, my rent. On that list of assets that we also own, we also have had this conversation, uh, about a number of facilities that we own, that we maintain, that we also have gifted at a dollar a year. Garage nine is a good example, where we have space to, that is currently, um, being allocated to the Arts Council. But we're responsible for the ongoing costs of maintaining that space. And there are other facilities, the auditorium, the Memorial Auditorium is another great example of, of a probably a, a, a great organization, the veterans, uh, folks do a wonderful job with that museum. But there's an expensive of holding that or owning that facility. So, um, CBRE will come back. Uh, we're working very closely with them. They're gonna come back with, uh, uh, overview of those properties and potential opportunities, either to jettison or sell some properties or, uh, other options available to council in order to maybe generate some additional revenue.
The, uh, okay, the, the building on Van Ness, are we still using part of that building for record storage?
Yes.
Okay. Because what it, part of my thoughts are, is if you're gonna be spending the money to do the improvements on Fulton tearing out the mall and redoing all that, that maybe some of the, the assessment study that, that's gonna be done by this, uh, group, maybe seeing how that could fit into the improvements that are gonna get done on Fulton that would make it more attractive for folks, uh, that may wanna lease that instead of using it for record storage. I mean, I don't know if it's a win for us, if we're able to rent it out or if it's better for us to keep it as, uh, storage, you know?
Right.
And then another one is, uh, we had that, uh, property at the, uh, the old Palm Lakes that, uh, that council voted to sell the, the area where the pro shop was to the, uh, the Moose?
Moose?
Yeah, is that already done and?
I believe the RDA has, has transferred, that's, that asset's been sold. So that was, remember, we sold the, the property, including the Moose Lodge, to the RDA or the former agency known as the RDA. And the RDA or the successor agency has.
I think that was done, it's subject to the state approving our property management plan.
Yeah.
So it's kinda still on hold?
Yeah, we're waiting for the state, but we have a sale agreement, so.
And Camp Fresno, didn't some years ago, didn't we have that leased out to a nonprofit and didn't go very well or?
No, we had it too with a management, third-party management. Uh, but no, we've never done it like we've done with our community-based organizations in our park facilities.
And then you've got the old, um, the, the Santa Fe offices that's leased out already to Greyhound?
Yeah, so last night, it was a five, uh, zero, it was a unanimous support to approve the CUP. So yes, we actually have a paying tenant now in the Amtrak, in the, uh, Santa Fe Depot.
There may, you know, even as far as somebody running the, uh, the Camp Fresno, I, I think, I don't, it may have been another, uh, property that we looked at in, in talking, maybe even with the, the folks at, uh, Managed Airways, was it Corsco?
Corsco does Riverside Golf Course.
Riverside.
Yeah.
Yeah, that there may be some type of, uh, of business out there that, that would do, uh, the, you know, take lease, uh, properties like that for camping and all that. Okay. So they really, we really don't have any properties that we, that we may have and, uh, maybe put up for sale that, uh, we can use it to, uh, you know, fix our, our other facilities we wanna keep?
Uh, well, we've sold some properties in the last year, um, but we've used some of those proceeds, um, to acquire additional property.
Okay.
Again, CBRE is gonna be doing this assessment and they'll, they'll be able to come back and tell us where there, there's some opportunities. Uh, as Councilmember Brand, uh, mentioned, we are moving forward. Probably we'll, uh, release the RFP within the next thirty to forty-five days, where we're looking to, um, enter into a ground lease for digital billboards on CDO and property. City Sacramento has done that with Forest Science, been very successful and generated a million dollars a year and new revenues to, to their coffers. Uh, I've identified at least six, maybe seven opportunities, uh, within the city of Fresno, where we could, um, also enter in a cylinder agreement to generate additional resources.
And it's gonna, it's gonna cost us, I would imagine, quite a bit of money to, uh, even, uh, I guess, fix up the back part of God Chalks?
Oh, the.
On, on.
Uh, the God Chalks.
Basement and.
Yeah, uh, the God Chalks building is gonna require a significant amount of investment. And again, that was one of those, uh, fifty-year leases and at the end of the lease, we'd hand the keys over to God Chalks and the building would look the same as it did the day that we handed the keys over and that didn't work out very well.
Yeah. That, because, well, that back part was, that, that was part of the, the construction of the garage as well, right? Attached to that and then they just.
Right. It was, it was an effort to keep God Chalks downtown.
Got it. That's still in pretty, super bad shape, that back part, yeah?
It is in, in need of a lot of work, uh, in the millions of dollars.
Millions, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Bruce, uh, in, in your workshop, I was hoping you could address, uh, maybe something along the lines of Camp Elwin, do you remember that? Where people volunteered to get that camp in shape and it was really in financial straits and a total mess. I don't know if we can incorporate, not reinvent the wheel, but incorporate their format or what they did to save that camp as maybe an alternative or at least something to consider. I think we're a lot, this is a lot larger and in more desperate shape than that camp. But it might help us to try to see, practically speaking, how someone else did it and if, would that be applicable to what we're trying to achieve and if it's feasible or not. Uh, and then it seems, again, here looking at the report, for seventy-six dollars a night for a two-bedroom apartment, a two-bedroom cabin, rather, um, it'd take a long way to get to that five-point-six million dollars. And like I said, I, I obviously love the mountains and I love, I've been to this camp and it was the same thing. It was a, it was a family, uh, deal they'd done every year and it was like a reunion. It was a lot of fun, it's a great facility and really enjoyed it. But, uh, and it was, and it's a steal, actually. But, um, so I hate to see us lose, lose something, an asset of this nature and quality. But again, uh, as you've indicated to us over and over, uh, you gotta match dollars to dollars and if it doesn't pin out, we've gotta do something to, not perpetuate it, but do something that's gonna help the city in the long run with what we need and what we can afford.
And, and the values or the amounts that we're talking about, I understand, are, are pretty overwhelming. But this isn't, happened overnight. This is decades, these costs are being driven by decades of deferred capital investment in our facilities. And so if we had, and I'll use the convention center, when we built the convention center, if we had identified the life cycle cost of that facility when we built it and start setting money aside annually, we wouldn't have had to issue probably close to twelve to thirteen million dollars of debt four years ago to take care of the forty years of deferred capital. Camp Fresno is no different. If we had just set aside funding or at least looked at that cost, why we are shaping or structuring our, our management agreement, we wouldn't be sitting here looking at all this, such a, uh, large amount of money and investment to try to catch up. Because we're literally trying to catch up with decades of what has been, uh, a number of assets, um, ignored assets, uh, on our books.
Well, you brought that epiphany to us, that this is what we have to do and we will be doing and have been doing since I've been on this council. And, uh, again, I appreciate your leadership and the administration's leadership in showing us that there's a, the, the equation is more complicated than one would think and we're on the right track, so.
We are on the right track, yeah.
Thank you for what you've, you've done for us. Thanks, Council President.
Right. Well, thanks, Bruce. Look, I, I, I kind of ask my questions through the, um, through the presentation, but, um, uh, I do agree that a couple of these could come back. Certainly the, uh, kinda break them out on their own. I think they, they do warrant some further discussion, but, but I think this is a great, I wanna say this, I think this is a good start to the discussion. I think this is perfect, is what we've been asking for, to be kind of, be apprised of what our real facility costs are and what it really costs to, uh, maintain them. So I, I wanna thank you and staff for working on that and putting this together. And, and I suspect that this is the beginning of a discussion, not, not even where close to the end. And I feel like we'll have kind of regular updates and that way we can.
That was the purpose of today's workshop.
Right, so thank, thank you for that. I kinda figure that's where we're going, so we look forward to the future updates. All right, now we're gonna take, uh, our scheduled communication for two forty-five. Uh, we have appearances by George Aguilar, Almaque, Maria Soto, and Juan Behar. Um, and I want to, um, if they're, if, are they here? Do I have George Aguilar, Almaque, Maria, Mario Soto? All right, so we will move on to General Administration, item two D. Which is, which is actions pertaining to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Emergency Solutions Grant Program.
Good afternoon, council. Uh, before I proceed with, with our, uh, our item for this afternoon, I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce you to a, a new division member. And, uh, the last time I was before the council, we had, uh, provided an update of, of some key vacancies that we needed to fill. I wanted to introduce Mr. Tan Nguyen. Tan, Tan is going to oversee our, our ESG, TBRA, and HOPA programs.
Very good.
He has the daily focus of these programs, as I do. And again, one of our goals is to improve our collaboration with the, the, those who provide homeless services in the city of Fresno, in particular, the Fresno-Bodare Continuum of Care. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce Tan real quick, so, so that you all understand we have somebody that's on board and again, has the daily focus of these programs.
I'm very pleased to hear that, thank you. Your, your, uh, arrival has been, uh, highly anticipated, so we're glad you're here.
Uh, on July ninth of twenty fifteen, the city of Fresno consulted with the Fresno-Bodare Continuum of Care regarding, uh, unallocated emergency solutions grant funds from fiscal year, uh, twenty thirteen, all of twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen. all of twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen. Uh, through our discussions with FMCOC, it was identified that West Care, California, and specifically Project Unite were in need of support for their worthwhile work. Project Unite is a collaboration between West Care and its subcontracted partners, Turning Point of Central California and Pavarello House. Project Unite identifies and assesses the most vulnerable and chronically homeless individuals and families, as well as those at risk of becoming homeless. This is accomplished through outreach, emergency housing, homeless prevention, by providing assistance with payment of rent and/or utilities that are in arrears and rapid rehousing. The service also provides case management services to assist with the development of skills to gain self-sufficiency. Project Unite began services on April first of this year. Through July first of twenty fifteen, they have assisted fifty-three individuals, seventeen of these clients have had, have minor children. Thirty-eight of those served were literally homeless and fifteen clients assisted were in danger of becoming homeless. In our consultation with FMCOC, it was agreed that West Care, California, and Project Unite be allocated four hundred sixty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars through a suspension of competition and an extension of current contract which expires, expired on August fifteenth of twenty fifteen. Uh, it's also recommended by and in consultation with FMCOC that the remaining unallocated, uh, funds be awarded through request for proposals that would be published on July thirteenth, which did happen. Staff recommends to the city council to approve an extension of the contract with West Care, California, and to award ESG funds in the amount of four hundred sixty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars for the period of the extension. Now, on July thirteenth, the city announced a notice of funding for emergency solutions funding and solicited for proposals for the homeless services of street outreach, emergency shelter, homeless prevention, rapid rehousing services, and related grant administration. The total funding available is two hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. The proposal, proposal process ended on July tw- twenty-fourth, uh, twenty fifteen. At that time, we received, uh, applications from the Fresno-Bader, uh, uh, members who are, uh, members of the Fresno-Badera Continuum of Care and, uh, participants who were, who are part of the Coordinated Access and Housing Matching System. They were invited to submit proposals, uh, for the period of September first, twenty fifteen, through June thirtieth of twenty sixteen. Uh, we received proposals from the Marjorie Mason Center, the Fresno Economic Opportunities Commission, and West Care, California. On August third of twenty fifteen, a preliminary review of proposals of applications was conducted by staff members, city staff members and two representatives of the Fresno-Badera Continuum of Care Executive Committee. Staff recommends that the city council approve an award of funding to the Marjorie Mason Center in the, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The Marjorie Mason Center is an active participant in the Fresno-Badera Continuum of Care and through the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, they will provide emergency housing with case management services for victims, uh, who have become homeless due to fleeing domestic violence. The Marjorie Mason Center Fresno Safe House will serve two hundred unduplicated homeless women and children within the twelve-month agreement period. The services provided will include emergency housing, supportive services, including food, clothing, case management, counseling, legal ser- services, parenting and life skills, support groups and linkages to housing and job training agencies and programs. Additionally, the Marjorie Mason Center will provide rapid rehousing, housing relocation, and stabilization services that will support twenty homeless domestic violence victims and their families. Uh, we also recommend an award of funding to the Fresno Economic Opportunities Commission the amount of sixty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The Fresno EOC is a nonprofit organization widely recognized as one of the largest community action agencies in the United States. They were founded in nineteen sixty-five and EOC has spent five decades investing in people and becoming self-sufficient. The Fresno EOC Sanctuary and Youth Services will utilize awa- awarded ESG funding to provide services for two hundred and five individuals with rapid rehousing, homeless prevention, and street outreach services during the twelve-month agreement period. Uh, the target population to be served includes individuals and families experiencing homelessness, those who are at risk of becoming homeless, and unaccompanied youth under the age of eighteen, and also youth aging aid of foster care, which is becoming a, a concern in the community. Funding will be used to support outreach efforts, case management, rental assistance, wraparound case management, and housing stabilization services. Staff recommends an award, uh, of funding to West Care, California, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars. West Care is a nonprofit organization that has provided housing services to the city's homeless population for over forty years. In collaboration with Turning Point of Central California and Pavarello House, West Care is focused on housing unsheltered homeless individuals residing in the city of Fresno, including chronically homeless, homeless veterans, and persons identified as at be in risk of, of becoming homeless. West Care's focus during the agreement period of one September twenty fifteen through June thirty, twenty sixteen, is to assist twelve individuals while continuing to assist fifty-three households that are currently being provided services. Lastly, uh, we recommend the approval of the Ninth Amendment of the Annual Appropriations Resolution appropriating six hundred ninety, ninety-one thousand one hundred dollars of emergency solutions grant funds and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment of the sub-reception agreements. Uh, this concludes my comments. I know we have at least the representatives from Marjorie Mason Center and, uh, and we have staff available to answer questions.
All right, thank you, Joe. We'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Okay, CNN, I'll bring it back to the dais, Councilmember Olivier. There's been a motion approved. Okay, we don't have a second as of yet. Councilmember Capriolio?
Thank you, uh, thank you for those statistics that you, you recited initially. Uh, but I, I think for me and perhaps my colleagues, I think we need more information, uh, along the lines of those that are recipients and their progress or lack of progress without violating the confidentiality privilege that exists there. Because I have no idea, honestly. I see the forms, I see the budget, I see how the money is gonna be spent in the organizations. I, I don't have a problem with that, but, but I am concerned with the results. And, and if, are, are those dollars being spent wisely? Is there a volume of people that we're helping? And for me, on page two of five, the Twenty-Five Cities Initiative to End Chronic and Veteran, Veteran Homelessness by twenty fifteen, uh, that's really important to me, uh, as well as the other efforts that are being provided. So, and it seems like we've got that in, this is HUD money, so we know how HUD is. We've, we've got a lot of experience there, so, uh, I think on, uh, I'm trying to find the page here, on the agreement itself, Emergency Solutions Grant, at page, um, seven and eight, it seems to require that we not only do the, the, the statistical information that's on Exhibit C and D and so forth, but it also, uh, addresses the need for a report, not only to them but to us. And the, the report is what I'm really curious about and I wanna see how, how far we've gone and how far we need to go and how much money this is gonna cost us in the long run. And are we getting the most bang for the buck? It's half a million dollars plus what we've done, plus carryovers. And I'm a little concerned about carryovers, why are there carryovers? We, we, uh, we have such a great need and Councilmember Olivier addressed that, uh, with his comments about vagrants and so forth and, uh, and I've just got a call in the middle of the meeting on the same, very same issue. So there's a great demand for the service.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Capriolio, Jennifer Clark, Development and Resource Management. Uh, as you recall, in June, one of the things that we talked about was our timeliness in allocating our emergency solutions grant funding. So when we were talking about, um, our, all of our Formula HUD programs, we said that the, the one place we were having trouble and that we had gotten behind was on our emergency solutions, uh, grant program. And so over the past year, we have been slowly trying to work our way back into our timeliness for allocation of those funds. This action today, um, allocates the remainder of the twenty thirteen, fourteen dollars and all of twenty fourteen, fifteen, which will bring us timely with our allocation of funds and they will all be expended by June of twenty sixteen, which would allow us then to be timely in our expenditure of funds as well. So this is, has been a process to get us into a timely manner. Um, so I agree, we have also been concerned about, um, the carryover, about, um, the lack of progress in allocation of funds. Um, one of the things that the, um, Continuum of Care stressed to us last year when we realized that we were behind was, please don't put everything out on the street all at once, everything you're behind. Put it out over a period of time, so we have time to actually utilize the funds. Um, so we do, uh, receive with our reimbursement requests, we do receive reporting from the agencies that tells us how they're progressing toward meeting the goals that are specified in their contracts. Um, now that we have Tan here, uh, Mr. Nguyen will be, will be, uh, reviewing those, uh, every day. We'll be working with the agencies, we'll be going out and visiting, we'll be monitoring the units that are being utilized, um, to ensure that we're meeting all of the requirements. Um, and the, the full reporting of what was accomplished in the last fiscal year will be part of our, um, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report that'll be coming to you in a workshop form, September tenth. So that, we will be bringing all of that back to you. So, um, yes, those are all valid concerns and we're concerned about the same thing. So, um, Mr. Nguyen is on, looking at this every day, uh, Mr. Trujillo every day, the city manager, and the mayor's office on a monthly basis to ensure that we are meeting our timeliness, not just of this program, but all of the programs. So absolutely, um, very important to us that, that we are addressing those concerns.
And it, uh, in the reporting aspect of this agreement, uh, what I'm seeking is something other than an Exhibit C, which is kinda checking boxes and numbers, but something a little more personal, something, again, without wa- waiving confidentiality, but to let us know the numbers and the issues that they have and is there some consistency here that we can address in a more detailed way that would be more beneficial to, uh, the recipients, particularly, again, the veterans. That's a, that's a, I think, a really, without them, we wouldn't even be having these discussions, so they really need some help.
We'll see if we can get some more narrative information of the types of assistance that are, is being provided rather than simply just how many persons and households and children were assisted. Um, and we can certainly work at the agencies to get you that kind of information. It does tell a, a bigger picture. I think the map point at the POV is really seeing some great successes in, in coordinating this access point for individuals and, and families who are homeless and who need assistance and having all the agencies working together through one, um, portal to ensure that we're addressing the larger population. Um, but again, there, um, the agencies work together to identify the need to, to create the, um, or to go out and con- conduct the point-in-time count. Um, and so those numbers have gradually been coming down. We think it's because of the work that is being done in the community by these agencies, by the fact that they're coordinated, by the fact that they have a, um, uh, a coordinated housing matching system now where they assess individuals and they can place them in, in units that are available because everybody makes their units, that information available to all of the agencies so they can work together. Um, so I think we're seeing success. Um, it would be nice to know, um, if, if those are really linked, if our dollars and the county's dollars and the federal, the other federal McKinney Act dollars are, are one-for-one making that, that impact on the community. I don't know that we'll ever know that for sure, but we can certainly get you additional, uh, information, some case studies, um, of individuals who are being helped by the program.
The, the other part of the, the portal that you mentioned, uh, my office and I'm sure Councilmember Olivier's office and, uh, and a couple of other council members here, we've called and we addressed the issue and the response we get is, oh, well, we sent people out on Thursday. And I'm waiting and waiting and waiting and that's it. And it's like, well, what, what, so they went out Thursday, did you meet the people we talked to? How many times did you talk to them? Do you give them three tries and then what do we do? Then, then to me, as with Councilmember Olivier, that I get, I think they get the vagrant status and, uh, we've gotta do something about that. If you don't wanna take advantage of the programs that we're offering and my, my council district's businesses, uh, like Councilmember Olivier's, we're getting calls all the time, Cedar and Shields, Fresno and Ashland, all the time. And, uh, I, I don't know, there's a, there's a gap there and I don't know how to address that because I, I, we need the service, we have the service, it's funded, but if they don't take advantage of it, what's our remedy? What do we do? How, how do we handle that? And, uh, anything short of them not being there will not be, uh, acceptable, at least in, in, in my district. And, and, uh, yesterday, uh, during this, during this meeting, uh, one of my constituents called and he's near, uh, a sump area and, uh, there's four that have moved in. We've called several times and, um, I think they probably should be locked in there and just keep them there, but that's another story. But I don't know that they wanna take advantage of the services. Now the fence to the, uh, the fellow that has, uh, must go to distro fee next door to the client that called me or the, the constituent, they cut through their fence, they're in the backyard, they're taking, uh, they're stealing and, uh, it's very dark, very easy for them to do and a person in that condition has no defenses. So, uh, it just, I, I share the frustration of...
Councilmember Capriolio, we, we all appreciate your frustration. We, we're all frustrated with trying to find, um, some kind of effective solution to the issues associated or, uh, with, with, with a homeless. We have it in the parks, the Parks Department's now funding a, a, a security guard at night to, because of the problems at Roding Park and, and the thefts and the damage. Now they camp out along Olive Avenue and, and our homeless task force was just out there, uh, yesterday for three hours with the folks from, um, uh, our, um, for the, from the MAP quest folks. At the end of the day, these, these ESG dollars are to provide those opportunities for those who want to get off the street. Unfortunately, those, there are those out there who don't want to take advantage and we cannot compel them to, to come with us 'cause we have a better solution for them. Uh, and so I don't want to take the challenges of dealing with the chronically homeless and lump it in under the ineffectiveness or as an umbrella that the ESG program is ineffective because we do help a lot of people, once they decide that they want the help. Uh, and we can be more than happy to have Sergeant Dewey and Chief Dyer come back and give you a, a workshop on, on some of the challenges that they face 'cause they're constantly, constantly interacting, they're bringing people, uh, out and to provide services. But at the end of the day, it's a life choice and somebody's gotta say yes to, to the services that we're offering to them because if not, we just can't arrest them. That's, that's, it's a free country, they're allowed to stay in a park during the day and if they wanna sleep, they can sleep. We banned shopping carts, we have shopping carts in the parks, but we still have the same problems and a lot of it. And it's not your district, I'm hearing it, I heard it last night when we were talking about moving Greyhound to the, the Santa Fe Depot. Restaurant owner doesn't want all those, those people hanging around and, and creating the problems that he perceived were occurring by, uh, the existing Greyhound Depot. But the Greyhound Depot, where it's at, is, is just, again, it's, it's where it's at in relation to, uh, a lot of other things. And so, um, I just urge you to not try to, or, or try to separate the issue of those who do not want to help from the availability of funds that, uh, we're trying to provide through these groups for those who do want it.
Well, I, I, again, I understand the need and I understand the effectiveness of the program and I think it's well over six hundred individuals that have been assisted and that's fantastic. Uh, I recognize that and totally understand that, I just wanna go to the next level. And I know that's apples to apples, perhaps, or apples to oranges, whatever, but it's, uh, it just, uh, Kerry Park is another one for me, uh, with little teenage gangs running around, not to mention the, the vagrants. So, and I, I don't know if it's, uh, if it's possible to arrest on vagrancy. I mean, if we post the signs and they're in violation, I, I know it's, uh, that we don't have the manpower quite yet, but we've gotta start somewhere to arrest them, take them downtown and, and, uh, I understand, I understand that, believe me, I understand the jail situation probably better than anybody here since it's my business, but I, I've just, the frustration level with our calls. And, and this right here with us, we can all see the frustration. And, and I appreciate what you folks do and, Mr. Nguyen, I, you gotta, you, there, if you did hurdles in high school, this will be the highest hurdle you're gonna, you're gonna have to clear and we appreciate you being here and taking on this responsibility and joining this excellent team. But just wanna let you know a few of the problems that we've, that we've all voiced here, so, thanks a lot.
Councilmember Soria?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I wanna also just welcome, um, Mr. Nguyen. Um, and we are excited that you have, um, that you are on board because I, I think that, as expressed, we've, have faced some challenges in getting these monies out over the last few years. Um, I know, I wanna thank you, um, both Jennifer and Jose for coming and meeting with me this morning and being flexible about it to talk about what it means to expend these monies, um, in a timely fashion. I know that we've been behind and so, um, from what I gathered in terms of the, the, the reports and in the conversation, um, this will give us, get us up to date, which is really good news, um, given that we've been behind and so, um, I'm excited about that. that, um, part of it. Um, I did express, you know, some of the same concerns that my colleagues have already expressed in terms of accountability, so trying to figure that out and I hope that in the workshop that you guys bring in September, um, that is, um, at least helps us understand really the accountability, um, piece because I think it's important for us to see, um, not only how they're going to expend it, but really learn as to, you know, how many people really, um, have consistent housing. Cause, you know, they may be housed for a few weeks and then they go back to the streets. So really getting those, those true numbers, um, or at least as close to, um, will be important. And then just, um, trying to figure out how we maximize our dollars to help our, we, we do have a homeless task force and so I know the challenge is, um, it's not a crime to be homeless, we know that, and the challenge is that, um, our officers can't just arrest anyone. Um, but figuring out how, um, we provide the tools necessary so that when they are out there, um, if, if there is no reason to arrest them, how do we really provide those services once they come into contact? I think we need to have a really honest conversation as to, um, what all our homeless task force is out doing. Um, yes, you know, we want to make sure that if they're committing crimes, that, um, you know, they're, that's being addressed, but if that's not the case, if they are out there and we're providing that resource, we need to figure out that we're effectively utilizing them and we provide them the resources and tools to provide the other, um, avenues for them to, for these people to be connected to either housing or other, um, social services. So, um, I will be supporting, um, this today. I think that, um, it is important that we do it now because I know in terms of the timeliness issue, um, and I hope that as we move forward with our new fiscal year, you know, given that we are, um, getting new staff and kind of revamping our department or the division, um, that we continue, you know, in the same direction and that, um, for the next fiscal year as we, um, have a timeline in place, we kind of stay in, in tune with that. Um, so I want to thank you for your time.
Councilmember Quintero.
Long day, long, short day. Uh, I'm going to second the motion. And, uh, you know, I, just a couple of comments on that. There's, I understand the frustration and everything, but, you know, finding out and, and you've selected some excellent agencies that have a proven track record of delivering. WesCare, Marjorie Mason, EOC, great job. You know, they, they've been in the, in the trenches, they, they provided the services and more importantly, they know, they know how to utilize those monies and, and get the, the best bang for their buck. Uh, I can tell you that in past years, what I've done, uh, is I've actually gone out and done site visits. I used to be on the United Way Board and before we approved monies, we went out and did site visits and, and talked, uh, we were able to talk to some of the clients or, or the, the, the management team. But the, the, the most telling that, you know, those monies are being utilized, uh, the right way and, and the best way is by doing the site visits. Believe me, that, that's really an eye opener to folks. And if anything, this money is just a drop in the bucket to, to, uh, uh, you know, provide those services. You know, that's, that's the other side of the coin, uh, city managers, there's never enough money, never enough money. Uh, I like the fact that, uh, that you're going to be, uh, uh, giving the monies out to these agencies in increments and, uh, and you're not going to give them the, the monies until they turn in their first report. And that's really, uh, a good backup for, for us in terms of accountability because, uh, I, I just really, you're doing it the right way. You know, you're, you're doing, the, the process that you've, that you've set up is, is really good, the, the monitoring of it. But, uh, once again, I, I just can't say enough about, uh, going out and doing site visits because even the folks that want help, a lot of times there isn't any, any, uh, uh, any monies to help them with and you go down over by Clinton and 99, you know, you see the, uh, the old hotels that have burned, that have, uh, that money has been invested and, and, uh, and that are, uh, nice and clean for families to, to, uh, to have some shelter there in, in those. There's a nice big one, uh, I forget, uh, I think it was called the Trade Ones back in the day and that's done up real nice and I forget what agency oversees that one. But, uh, that's, uh, uh, you know, I just, uh, it's, it's really, it's a good process you put in place, so thank you.
Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you. I, I just wanted to, to kind of follow up my early remarks with the observation that in, at least in, within my perception, uh, there's a difference between homelessness and vagrancy. And we definitely have a problem with vagrancy. In fact, this is the largest, I feel very comfortable saying this, vagrancy in the city of Fresno is the largest problem facing this municipality. And I think that this body is going to have to act in conjunction with the administration to solve this problem. Whether it's more resources for law enforcement, whether it's a more creative solution to the problem, this body is going to have to act in the coming months or else we are going to face a total rebellion from our business community who are struggling day in and day out to solve this problem. And I have been reduced to telling my business owners along Blackstone, man, there's nothing we can do. Go get cayenne pepper at Costco and scatter it on the sidewalk in front of your business because that keeps campers away. As an elected official representing these people and these business owners in my community, the best I can do is tell them, call the cops, but go ahead and, and sprinkle cayenne pepper on your sidewalk. That's not very empowering. And so I wanted to read this email here that I received from, uh, a constituent. This is Servando Tovar, he's with, uh, The Undertaker. Hello Clint, I work for Whitehurst Sullivan Burns and Blair Funeral Home, 1525 East Saginaw Way, Fresno, 93704, which is in your district. I have a very serious problem with prostitution and a heavy increase of homeless people in our area. It's a safety concern for our clients that do business with our funeral home. Lately, we have lost some business due to the heavy, heavily unwanted foot traffic that is occurring on a daily basis. And this is revenue and future business that we will not be able to ever secure again. I have taken all measures on my end by going out there and talking to these people to move along and calling Fresno Police for their assistance. I have also posted private property and loitering signs and submitted a letter to the chief of police so they're aware of our problem and to enforce the municipal code. I, Clint, I need your help. I cannot do this by myself. Please let me know what I can do to be of any assistance to you in this matter because I do not want this problem to escalate to a more serious situation. Because when I go out there and pick up the trash and the shopping carts they leave behind and I ask them to move, they start to verbally assault me. I have big shoulders. I'm not so much concerned for myself, but for our families we serve on the most difficult time of their lives and the safety of my coworkers. I hope to hear from you soon either by phone or from, or by email. And so I called this gentleman, this is just one, and everybody from taco stands to tuxedo places to insurance places, I even had a psychic call me to complain about homeless that are, that are scaring away her business. This is the most pressing issue facing this municipality today. And so I think this is a good first step, uh, well, an additional step. I think that, uh, Marjorie Mason Center does great work. I'll be, I'll be voting in support today, but we, there has to be a distinction made between vagrancy and homelessness and then we have to go after it. Because while I have compassion for the people who, for whatever reason, um, have chosen or, or are unable to get off the streets, I also have compassion for our business owners of all shapes, colors, sizes, genders, ethnic backgrounds that have staked their entire lives on these Blackstone businesses and these businesses are not just on Blackstone, but, but even reach up into the northern parts of our city where this vagrancy has become a major issue. So I have compassion for them too. They're just trying to make it and they're unable to make it. So that is why this body in conjunction with our administration has to act to solve this vagrancy problem and as soon as possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Brand.
How do I follow that? Pretty good. Um, actually, speaking of up north, I went to, I had a meeting, uh, with North Blackstone merchants, uh, north of Bullard. Councilman Branda was there with me, uh, the PD was there and they made it clear that there's two different types of clients, as Clint mentioned, there's the vagrants and the homeless and most of these people, not most, but a good percentage actually live in homes and apartments, they're not homeless, they have places to go, they're just professional panhandlers, but their businesses are having the same issues, you know, aggressive panhandling, sleeping overnight, you know, breaking in, it's constant. Uh, now I, I get virtually the same emails, the same pleas from, from merchants and it's, it's a citywide, you know, problem, it's not just, you know, uh, local, in one district and we've all know about the whole thing on, without repeating, on recycling centers and all that stuff. And of course, if, I mean, we arrest people, you know, they're released the next day, so there's another problem too. I don't know if we have to reserve 10 more sales at, at the Fresno County Jail or what, but it is affecting not just businesses, but it's affecting residences too. I mean, all over the city, I mean, that, I think I agree with, uh, Councilman Olivier, it, it's a growing, growing concern about people feeling safe, about, uh, their cars being vandalized, their homes being burglarized. Um, and I know these are a, agencies with a long track record, but I'm wondering if we need to start expanding our view, uh, looking at alternative ways to deal with this. I know at one of the meetings, one of the solutions, this, these are the, the, Officer Dewey, believe, he's the guy that specializes on, uh, homeless, is that there's a hardcore of maybe 200, 300, 400 of these, uh, homeless that are mentally ill, have severe drug problems and that's where we need intervention from Fresno County Mental Health. And now that they, their budget is starting to, to push up, I think we have the resources there to make referrals because if you have somebody in front of your house, in front of your business and they're totally schizophrenic and yelling and screaming, this can be frightening experience to some people, but the standard Thoman jail is not going to work. They need to, you know, go to facilities where there's drug treatment, there's medication, there's mental health. Um, and I really think that the solution is working with Fresno County. I don't think we've really done enough with our partner in Fresno County to blend in these social services that they offer and they've now got funding and to, I don't know, there's just, again, I have no solution, easy solution, but all I can say is what we're doing right now is failing and the problem is getting worse and it's affecting, you know, the quality of life everywhere. So I'd just like to open, again, the dialogue and extend the invitation to Fresno County and, and some of the other agencies too, to really, uh, look at some solutions here and, and I don't know what the answer is, but, uh, I, I'm approved the item today. I think it's just one step of other steps we have to take to solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brand. I, I just have, um, maybe a question or two and a, and a comment, um, because I want to join certainly in the sentiment of my colleagues, uh, this, uh, afternoon, um, impassioned plea by, um, my friend, Councilmember Olivier. I, I, I definitely think that there's some truth to distinguishing between home, the, uh, homeless person and a vagrant, uh, but I don't want, uh, Councilmember Capriolio's orders to be lost either. The, these issues are connected. They aren't completely isolated from one another, but, but there should be a distinction. I think it's fair to, fair to recognize that, but they're not completely, completely separate. And so, um, in the spirit of that, I know you, you mentioned that, um, as we disperse our, uh, allocate these funds to our partners, we're going to be asking for kind of some status reports. Did I, did I hear that right?
Uh, yes, uh, through, through the HMIS system, the Homeless Management Information System, we should be able to obtain information from them. It's one of the things that, uh, we'll, we'll go back and do and, and again, for, for, uh, Councilmember Capriolio, uh, we want to make sure that we are, we're able to answer those questions, so that's one of the things that we'll make sure, uh, to go back and do and see if we can be provided with those reports.
Yeah, so, so I would, I would just say that, um, you know, one of the steps we need to take, let's just make sure that we are. So I don't even think we need to, you know, see anymore. I think we should add that to whatever motion if we need to. It sounds like that, that's all your intent, you want to do that anyway. Clearly I can hear the sentiment of my colleagues up here that we want to see it. Um, so I just think that we just need to bake that into just the way that we allocate funds. Um, and if you all are going to be on a, you know, allocate quarterly or semiannually, I'm not sure, you know, quite which way you decided to do it yet, um, but if in fact that the requirement for the allocation is some type of substantive report, uh, then maybe what makes sense is especially this, this first year since we're, we are really kind of getting back in the groove, getting back in the cycle. We have staff, we, I think we're, we're, we're moving in the right direction for sure, um, that maybe this next year that we, we be a part of those, that report too. And that way, uh, when, as when Councilmember Capriolio is, is asking and Councilmember Olivier is talking about, are we making sure we're dealing with vagrants and homeless? I mean, we now have information in front of us with our partners, uh, and we can provide input, uh, from what we're hearing. Because here's what happens and I can, I want to give you all the perspective of the council member because we're all in the same organization, but we, we, at times we play distinctive roles. So what we get, and it's frustrating for us, is we get all the calls and all the complaints and then we in turn, uh, rely on you, we, you know, share those complaints and concerns with you and then we rely on you all to, uh, you know, uh, respond to that. And, but there's a, obviously there's a, a, a disconnect in that, in those processes. There's a disconnect for the, for the, um, constituent that calls in from, from, to us, then there's a disconnect from us to you and, and, and so there's a lot of frustration built up in the entire process on, on everybody involved, the business owner, the council office and the staff, you know, uh, who, who, and you guys have been underserved. So, and it's a complex problem. As Bruce correctly highlighted, you know, when we're talking about solving homelessness, you can't have that conversation unless you're talking about bringing the county in the discussion because they have all the services. So we, we get the complexity of it. So I think for, for us, if we can be a part of the, the next round of status reports before we allocate funding, um, I think that would make sense and then we, we can then figure out if we're getting enough information, uh, in those reports, if we're satisfied with that and if we're not, we can beef it up and ask our partners to provide more. And I think we would begin, begin to have more comfort. It would arm us with information when we're talking to our constituents, um, because that's really what we want to do here is, is just close that frustration gap because, you know, I hear it on, on the part of my colleagues and it's, and it's, uh, it's a fair one. Uh, so that was really what I wanted to ask is, is how we were going to do that. If we're going to do that, kind of an allocation system and, uh, if we're going to be asking for status reports, share that with us and then maybe we can provide some input too. We, we want to the best of our ability, I think, what we all desire is to work as a team and there are, there are distinct roles that we play and I think that's a role that we, we can play, um, in this whole thing.
If I could, Council President, absolutely. Um, about, uh, a month and a half ago, two months ago or so, we rolled out the dashboard and I realized at that time that was a little much for information, you know, the feedback was, and maybe we need to sit down and kind of chunk it into easier pieces of information. But we also committed as part of that strategy to come back and then we'll be back in, July, August, October, as we commit to you and to HCDC with quarterly reports and how we're progressing with ESG, CDBG, you name it, it's on that HUD list, we will be providing and we will probably schedule a workshop-
Yeah.
-so that we can go over how we're progressing. We'll go over the dashboard and we'll provide you that detailed information to tell you if we're hitting a target, whether it's the number of home rehabs or senior paints or the number of contracts and what are the outcomes of those contracts under ESG. But that will go part and parcel with that quarterly, uh, report that we'll provide you.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect, Bruce, because that, that keeps in the spirit, I think, of what we're all, what we're all trying to do and, um, yeah, and I, and yeah, so, and, and we're, this process is evolving, so, you know, we'll, I'm asking, you know, staff to be patient with us and, and of course, my colleagues probably have to exercise, you know, more patience too, but obviously we're frustrated and I get it, but I think we're, we're moving in the right direction, but, um, uh, and it's going to evolve a little bit. So these first couple workshops, when we get the updates, you know, we may have, we may have to refine them a couple of times to really dig down and get the information that we want because I agree, we, we need to make sure that if we're funding, we have outcomes and we need to know what those outcomes are and we need to know what our partners are doing and, and if they can do it better or something we need to do. So, so anyhow, I just wanted, I wanted to say that I'm going to be supportive of this today as well. I think we all, we all want to be supportive, um, you know, as Councilmember Olivier has pointed out today, the homeless issue is a major issue. On the way in today, I had a, we had a text message with photos and complaints about, you know, non-response- from our homeless task force. You know, this is on my way to the office, you know, after getting out of a mine taxing airboard meeting. But, you know, so I have to drive by the site on the way here and look and see what's going on. And so it's a daily thing for all of us, and I know we all want to get there, and this is one piece of the big puzzle, not the only one, but certainly a piece. So those are my, that was my question and my comment, so I'll be supportive today. The only thing I will ask, I know Councilmember Olivier made a motion, you know, Councilmember Olivier, I would just ask that we add in that motion. I know we're going to come back in the workshop. Well, you know, I think we've addressed it, so we don't need them in the motion at all. We're going to look at the status report in the workshop, right, Bruce?
I'd be more than happy to have Sergeant Dewey come back and, as well as the folks from Map Point, and they can kind of give you an update of how they're progressing and some of the things that they run up against. Let's not forget that our most recent point in time survey has shown a reduction in the number of homeless on the streets. But I think the difference between then and, or then and now, is that they may not be concentrated in one area of town as much as they used to be.
Well, you know what, let's do this. I like the idea. I think it's probably time for a workshop with the homeless task force. I'm not sure if we've had one lately.
No, we can make that happen.
Yeah, because it'd be good to hear what they're going through, but I want to be very fair with you, too, Bruce, and they should be prepared to hear what we deal with, too. So it's definitely going to be a two-way.
If you don't mind, if you allow me, since we're reading emails, let me read you an email that I received today from Sergeant Dewey. "Today, we responded again to a location and a subject by the name of it, I will hold the name, who has known the area to fix bicycles. This is over by Roding Park, it's over on Olive Avenue. During the course of our efforts, we have arrested the gentleman upwards of a dozen times or more, violated his probation countless times, as well as stored containers full of property for him. The property sits for 90 days and is eventually disposed of. Upon today's date, the gentleman questioned was blocking a sidewalk on the west side of West Avenue. He had with him approximately 100 bicycle frames, hundreds of bicycle tires and wheels, as well as other miscellaneous parts and debris. After lengthy discussion with X in custody, he agreed that everything had been dumped illegally by a church, and that he was unable to take it with him. He was eventually given, was eventually given over to our homeless task force for disposal. Along with Sergeant Dewey and another officer, they coordinated a cleanup with sanitation for the entire West Avenue from Olive southbound to where dead ends into the park. It took two hours. The city utilized 10 workers from sanitation and a rear loader dump truck. We also brought out workers from Map Point and the Pavarello House to do outreach to everyone we contacted. Of the dozen or more subjects that were contacted, only one agreed to services. That gentleman had recently moved from San Francisco into the area. The other subjects all refused, as they have in the past, every effort to provide them help." That in a nutshell is what Sergeant Dewey and our officers on the homeless task force, as well as those from Map Point and Pavarello are facing every day. So I'm, we should certainly have this discussion, because I hear it from every corner of this community as well. But this is a challenge, because there are certain limitations as to what we can and can't do, and it's not necessarily a resource issue, because as of two years ago, we didn't have a homeless task force. So appreciate the discussion and debate, and then opportunity to also provide the council with some context and an email from Sergeant Dewey.
Yeah, and I think from this perspective, with the homeless task force, too, what they probably be well-served to understand from our end is better communication with our offices, which they can do a better job of, quite frankly. So I think that I'm certainly sensitive, you know, as a person of how to deal with these folks, but I'm also keenly aware of effective communication, and they break down in that area sometimes. And I think, you know, having a workshop where we can hear their challenges, and maybe we can set some expectations between them and us and you, I think would do a lot, would do everyone a lot of good. And I think it folds really nicely into what we're talking about here with ESG and the entire thing. It's a much bigger picture, and there are many moving pieces, so, yeah, that, I think that's a great idea, and we'll work together to schedule that. Thanks for offering that. So those are my comments. I see I have Councilmember, the maker of the motion, queue back up, Councilmember...
Can I just?
Oh, wait a minute, really quickly.
I need to leave, so I want to, for point of order, I want to record my vote and support, because I need to leave.
There's been a motion, there's been a second. Can she record a yes vote?
We can just vote. We can just vote. I was just thinking that as part of any workshop from our homeless task force, that we can, I think it's important that this body hear from business owners who are affected by this problem, and if there's a way to actually bring them in and have them participate in something like this, I think that that would be beneficial for our city officials to hear what's going on and how livelihoods and lives are being threatened with absolute disaster because of this epidemic in our city. So that would be my ask, would be to involve business owners in any kind of discussion. I realize our police are doing everything they can, I realize it's a difficult problem, I realize that they're overburdened, that they're trying to keep their heads above water, but so are our business owners. And while I have sympathy with our city employees, it's this body's responsibility to decide what to do and make policy, and if we have to, then we have to hire more homeless task force people, and we need to deploy them as quickly as we possibly can to address this issue. So if there's any way to have these Blackstone business owners come forward and participate in this, not in a community meeting sort of setting, not in a social and economic justice sort of setting, but in a setting where we are here talking about survival of our businesses because of this problem. Thank you.
I'd be happy to work with you on the structure of the workshop, Councilmember Olivier. So we have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Quintero, right? All right, all those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. Thank you. Thanks, staff. We now are moving on to our 3A item, which is our very own President Emeritus, Councilmember Brandau. Your's yours.
All right, I'm going to try and make this real easy. Hopefully, Councilman Capriolio doesn't chime in as much as he has been throughout the day. But there's been a new little park added out, and it's a very small park, but it's a great little park that serves a neighborhood out off of Herndon and Hayes. And it's related to kind of a McCaffrey development that's gone in there, and they've desired to name that park Turtle Bay Park. Although I haven't witnessed any turtles in northwest Fresno recently, I'm in agreement that that's a fantastic name. So I'm asking to support the naming of this park, Turtle Bay Park.
All right, I'll take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Come on down, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Goldie Lewis, 7020 North Van S Boulevard with McCaffrey Group, and I support the naming of the park. It's a darling park, it has a big turtle as our little ambassador. I'm amazed at the use this park is getting. Every time I'm out there, there's people out there, that and the trail that we build, it's incredible. So it's really nice to see when you build these facilities and the general public really enjoys them. So I would encourage you to support this nomination on the naming of the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to comment on this item? All right, CNN, I'll bring it back to the dice, Councilmember Capriolio.
I just wanted to ask you to extend our appreciation to Bob and Brett McCaffrey and the McCaffrey Group for this particular park and their endeavors to do this and make it work. I know Steve had a very small part in it, but, the turtle part, so to speak. But anyway, if you'd extend that appreciation to them, it's more citizens of that quality in our community is greatly appreciated and should be encouraged. Thanks.
And Goldie, thanks for your patience staying with us throughout the afternoon as well. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm glad to hear there's an actual turtle at the park. Does Councilmember Brandau get a turtle? Well, you know, we do know that, I'll be supportive of the naming of the park today, of course, but we do know that Councilmember Brandau likes to sneak in the parks, so we'll be watching him very closely.
I've been known to do that.
You know, he may dress up like a turtle to get in for free. So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 6-0. Councilmember Soria absent. Thank you.
Thanks, Goldie.
All right, we'll now move on to unscheduled communication. I have one card up here from Rick Morse.
Trying to figure out how to raise this thing, never mind. Can you hear this? All right. Have you guys ever heard the phrase, "You don't shoot the messenger"? You don't shoot the messenger because sometimes when you shoot the messenger, you amplify the message and you martyr the messenger. And even if you manage to kill the messenger, you don't kill the message, so you don't shoot the messenger simply because you're likely to piss off the messenger. About a week and a half ago, I spoke to a woman from Channel 47 News who indicated to me that in 2011, there was an amendment to Elections Code 9255, which ensures the city cannot change a charter at a primary election. And she asked me, did that change my opinion about my original magic trick? And I have to admit that, yes, it did. It changed my opinion about my original magic trick. But she encouraged me to go do more research, so I checked out the Legislative Digest for 2010 and 2011, and I came to the conclusion that, no, did not change my opinion about my original magic trick. And in my opinion, the charter change in 2010 was both inappropriate and illegal. So for a second time, abracadabra, you still don't exist. But don't shoot the messenger. Okay. I couldn't possibly be responsible for an entire illegal city charter change in 2010. Let's move on to this letter. By a show of hands today, who here wants to admit for the record that they knew the content of this letter before it was mailed? Anybody? Did you know about it before it was mailed? That's the question. All right, the second question I'm going to ask you, by a show of hands, is who wants to be subpoenaed into a court of law, testify under penalty of perjury regarding the factual nature of this particular government document? It's an official government document. In case you did not understand the question, by a show of hands, who wants to be subpoenaed into a court of law and testify under penalty of perjury regarding the factual nature of this official government document? For the last three and a half months, I've been telling you guys that somebody in the city of Fresno does not want me in the medical marijuana world. Well, I've identified those people, and for those people, I'm your huckleberry. The rest of you who don't have a clue, all I can say is God bless you for not being a part of this. It's been a long, interesting six and a half years, but I was trying to express more communication in the medical marijuana community with this board, and I think that's what these people are trying to do. I think they're trying to stop the communication. So I thank you for your time, and if you have any further questions, feel free to give me a call.
All right, do we have any other unscheduled communication? All right, CNN, that will adjourn today's meeting. We are adjourning today in the memory of Pete Defendis. Thank you.